Okay, I'm calling this meeting, the open portion of our schoolwork meeting tonight to order at 6:01 PM. Let's start with a roll call, trustee Alvarado.
President.
Uh trustee Vargas.
Here.
Trustee Markoff.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Morocco is here, I'm gonna go ahead and call uh trustee Amor.
Yeah.
Trustee Sanchez.
Here.
Uh trustee Batamenda.
Here.
Oh, thanks, thank you. And um Taylor, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes. Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I bow to the gods, to the eye of the United States of America, and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
Thank you. I will read, now read the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the Payum Koicham, the people of the West, as the traditional land caretakers of this land on which Vista Unified School District was built, and its surrounding traditional cultural landscapes. Today, the Payum Koicham are known as Luceno and are made up by seven bands, La Hoya, Pala, Alma, Pajanda, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Solola. We, Vista Unified School District, are mindful of the indigenous peoples in this place, and we pay our respects to the Luceno, past, present, and future. We are grateful to have the opportunity to be part of this community in Luceno Territory and to honor their history, culture, and perseverance of spirit. We do not have any um reports of action taken in closed session. Um I now will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by trustee Alvarado, seconded by trustee Markov. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in there say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Um so, right now, we are. Get my script. We will now convene a public hearing on the Bellamente Montessori School renewal petition. The district received a petition to renew Bellamente's charter and assigned certification, deeming the petition to be complete on October 3rd, 2025. Therefore, the district commenced the applicable timelines for the petition renewal process. Bellamente seeks renewal for, of its charter for a five-year term commencing on July 1st, 2026, and ending on June 30th, 2031. The purpose of this public hearing is to determine the level of support for the petition by district teachers and other district employees and parents, guardians. This matter will then come back to the board for final action at a future board meeting. Representatives from Bellamente will first have an opportunity to make a presentation to the board regarding their renewal petition, and will receive a maximum of ten minutes. I would now like to invite the representatives of Bellamente to come forward to the podium to make their presentation.
Alright, good evening. Thank you Board President Morocco, trustees, and superintendent Dr. Doyle, for your leadership and for your commitment to the students and families of Vista Unified. We appreciate your support. I'm Patrick Rotten, Director of Compliance. It is a pleasure for us to be here tonight. Although you have a petition which includes academic data and growth and other required components, tonight Erin Feeley and I would like to provide you with an overview of a Bellamente student experience. And now, I'm proud to introduce Erin Feeley, founder and superintendent of Bellamente Montessori Academies.
Thank you, Pat. Board President, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Doyle. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Bellamente this evening. Since opening in 2013, Bellamente has been guided by one clear purpose, to provide an authentic Montessori education that's free, equitable, and accessible to all of our students. We're proud to be the only public American Montessori Society verified school in the state of California, a distinction that ensures quality, accountability, and academic excellence in everything we do.
Let me know when you'd like me to move to slides. Okay, next slide. At Bellamente, we believe that every child deserves a personalized path to success. We serve approximately 418 students. We attempt to maintain low teacher-to-student ratios and contain classrooms with an aid so that teachers and students receive the support that they need.
Nearly sixty-four percent of our scholars are economically disadvantaged, and as a Title I school, we're deeply committed to equitable access, academic achievement, and social emotional development.
Our recent test scores, excuse me, results tell of a promising story of our academic achievement and all of the hard work that our teachers and students put into their own teaching and learning. Our classrooms are safe, nurturing, and inclusive, where children thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Our staff focus not only on nurturing academic success, but also in building social emotional competence.
Next slide. Our commitment to excellence has been recognized across the state and the nation. We have been WASC, Western Association of Schools and Colleges, accredited since 2018, demonstrating continuous improvement and academic rigor. We're American Montessori Society verified, ensuring fidelity to the Montessori philosophy.
We earned the California Green Ribbon Award for our environmental and sustainability programs, and this year received the Green Achiever Award, which is the award's highest level. Since 2019, we have been recognized by the Alliance for a Healthier Generation for promoting staff and student wellness in eight of nine categories. And in 2025, this year, we proudly received the CDE Purple Star School Designation, honoring our support for military-connected families. Bellamente also believes in giving back to the community. Each year, we host food drives for Camp Pendleton, hold sock drives for our area homeless shelters, and do several beach cleanups each year, among many other student-led service projects.
Each of these recognitions and community service activities reflect not only our high standards, but our heart for the whole child and the community that we serve. Next slide.
So our Montessori program and academic focus integrates four key areas that guide everything that we do. First, wellness. The Montessori philosophy is built on independence and curiosity. Students participate in garden and nutrition programs, learning how food grows, how to prepare healthy meals, and how to care for their environment.
It's education for both the mind and the body. For our younger students, they are immersed as sea-to-table experience on our campus, while our older students take on responsibilities of managing the school gardens where the food is grown. The garden is the heart of our wellness program. Next slide.
The second key area is extended learning. We teach real-life and world skills from leadership and teamwork to civic engagement and service learning. Students take what they learn inside the classroom and apply it to life beyond the campus. Field trips are curricular, supporting content in the classroom, and may be students selected and led based on student interest.
Next slide. Our third key area is core academics. Montessori classrooms make learning hands-on. Whether it's algebra, reading comprehension, or science, students use concrete materials to understand abstract concepts deeply. If you look to the very far left, we have the stamping, and that, in particular, teaches place value. Addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. Next to that, we have the fraction circles. Those teach numerator, denominator, compare sizes, find equivalencies, perform addition and subtraction with fractions. If you look to the far right, we have the Montessori Algebraic Playboard. It teaches square roots, factors, multiples. Students can physically build squares to find square roots and use patterns to understand concepts in the lowest common multiple. Next slide.
Our fourth key area is experiential learning. We all know that children learn by doing. They experiment, build, problem-solve, and explore, developing not just knowledge, but the confidence to use that knowledge.
What I hope that we're able to show you through our presentation tonight is that every part of our curriculum is designed to inspire curiosity, critical thinking, and lifelong learning, and it prepares our students not just for tests, but for life. Next slide.
From our youngest learners in primary to our middle school scholars, every classroom is a community. You'll see students choosing meaningful work, collaborating with their peers, and showing incredible focus because they have ownership for their learning.
The Montessori environment fosters not only academic growth, but independence, empathy, and leadership, qualities that we hope stay with our students long after they leave Bellamente. Next slide.
At Bellamente, learning, however, does not stop at the classroom board. Our students explore the world around them through field-based instruction and education. They study science at Camp Cuamaca, marine biology at Catalina Island, environmental science at the San Elijo Lagoon, and history in Washington DC. These are just a few of the opportunities that our students enjoy throughout the school year.
These experiences bring learning to life, connecting what they study in school to the real world and helping them understand their role in it. They come home not just with the knowledge, but with perspective, confidence, and a sense of adventure. Next slide. At Bellamente, we collaborate with organizations that share our mission to support the whole child. Vista Community Clinic for Health and Wellness Programs, Boys and Girls Club of Vista through our expanded learning opportunities partnership, Sunrise System Wellness Club for community service projects, Garden Rehabilitation, and our weekly third-grade reading program.
The San Diego County Sheriff's Department provides safety training and mentoring for our faculty and staff. And groups like Live Well San Diego, Palomar Family Counseling Services, and Stop It Solutions help us promote emotional health, safety, and kindness on campus. These partnerships allow us to provide enrichment, safety, wellness, and hands-on learning opportunities, far beyond what a single school can offer on its own. Bellamente is more than a school. It is a community hub of learning, service, and growth.
Next slide. At Bellamente Montessori Academy, our students are thriving. They're growing academically, emotionally, and socially. They're learning to be independent thinkers and compassionate leaders and responsible citizens. We're proud to be part of the Vista Unified family, and we're proud to offer a model of education that's both innovative and deeply rooted in equity, respect, and the whole child. So tonight, on behalf of the staff, the students, and the families of Bellamente, I ask for your renewal of our charter so that we can continue this important work of providing a public Montessori education that change lives and strengthens our community. I want to thank you for your time, for your trust, and your partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, the board will now receive public input on the petition. Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board, and the board shall limit total time for public input to twenty minutes. Um, if any members of the public wish to speak regarding the charter renewal petition for Bellamente Montessori School, please approach the podium and address the board.
Hi. Good evening, trustees. My name is Lindsay Myers. Um, this is my second year at Bellamente and my first year as the PTA president. I'm honored to be here tonight. I have um a kid in kindergarten, and my daughter's in second grade. Our journey for Bellamente actually began when we were still living in Germany. We were looking for an alternative to our zoned school in Oceanside, something that aligned better with our family values. We are already familiar with the Montessori approach. We really loved how it fosters a love of learning that's a lifelong. Um, the Montessori classrooms are designed to help children grow independently. They're encouraged to think, explore, and problem-solve at their own pace. And the mixed age groupings allows them to build deep connections with their teachers. So uh my daughter is a mixed class with the first, second, and third graders. This also allows them to learn from the teacher and the other children in the class. And this creates a deep sense of security and trust, and no matter their background or ability, they find a place where they can thrive. Um, it builds confidence, empathy, and leadership naturally over time. And the connection is contagious. You can see this uh during the drop-off process, that it extends outside of the classroom. From the parking lot down to their classroom, they'll say hi to at least three different staff members, all that know them by name. The school being small is unique, that um every child can be addressed, and this really lets the child know that they're known, seen, and valued. Um, as parents, we feel and see that same worth every single day. We chat at the drop-offs and pickups, and it's clear it's a healthy community. Stepping into the PTA president role, I really got a feel for that this year. Um, it's been incredible, actually. I've been overwhelmed by the enthusiasm of staff and families eager to participate. The leadership at the school is wonderful, always answering questions, encouraging our efforts, and celebrating us, and you can tell it's working by the turnout that we've had lately. Um, we had a trunk-or-treat last week, and the parking lot was filled with families having a wonderful time, laughter. We had twenty-three cars set up. Just in a safe, healthy place. And then next week is our Fall Festival that we're planning. We have eighteen parents in one group chat in a school of only four hundred, and it just blows my mind that all of these people want to be involved in making an experience for their child. Um, Bellamente is the only AMS-verified, free Montessori program in California. Um, what amazing thing it is for families to be able to choose that type of school right here in Vista. And um what truly makes it special, of course, is the community that begins in the classrooms. So um thank you so much. I'm honored to be a part of Bellamente and honored to be here today. Thank you.
Good evening, President, trustees. Um, my name is James Smith. I'm a parent of a student at Bellamente. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors as a treasurer and a volunteer and a member of the PTA. And I just wanted to share my personal experience and observations. Um, aside from the data that already speaks for itself, and probably the testimonies of others, I'm speaking on their behalf. Uh, the community that Bellamente clearly produces is something I've not experienced before. Maybe in my childhood or in other schools' observations, I have other children, they're older. Um, my daughter's thriving. The, the friendship and the bond that I see every day when I walk up there for drop-off and pickup between the students of all kinds of ages, all kinds of backgrounds. Um, it, it comes together in a, in a beautiful way that promotes creativity, promotes excitement, and zeal to be there, as well as the staff being so professional and so polite. Um, it's just such a great thing. And then with people like Lindsay, um, and Erin, and Pat, and all the other wonderful folks there that, that all come together, that's ultimately what I'm trying to to share, is the environment and the community that is very tangible, but data does not speak to it. That's really all I'd like to say. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Arthur Congo. I'm the Senior Director of Local Advocacy with the California Charitable Association. Um, I work primarily down here in San Diego County, supporting our charter schools, our member charter schools. Um, I've sent you all a letter of support for Bellamente. It has a lot of wonderful sections of EdCo that kind of outline the renewal process. Um, but it also has some key data points I'd like to pull out and talk about just a bit here. So, talking about the year-over-year academic growth at, at Bellamente and comparing them with statewide outcomes, um, and looking at their two largest subgroups, which are Hispanic students and socio-economically disadvantaged students. Uh, Hispanic students in Bellamente outperformed their statewide subgroup in ELA by eleven-one percent this past year. Uh, that same subgroup outperformed their statewide subgroup in mathematics by about five percent. Uh, socio-economically disadvantaged students at Bellamente outperformed their statewide subgroup in ELA by eleven and a half percent, just a little over one and a half percent. And that same subgroup outperformed their statewide subgroup in mathematics by just under four percent. Uh, lastly, the English learners at Bellamente who scored a four on the LPAC outperformed their statewide subgroup by just under thirty-one percent, um, which is really a testament to the strong data practices that Bellamente has in the classroom that allows teachers to review data, data, um, kind of day in, day out, and through their assessments that they, that they implement. And it helps inform them to execute appropriate intervention strategies for students, um, to really make sure that all the students are getting the support that they need. Um, so as, you know, the staff conducts and, you know, more deeper analysis, um, and we wait the staff report, I really encourage you all to go visit Bellamente and kind of see what's going on in the classroom, um, to, one, see the culture that the previous speaker talked about, um, but also see kind of what's going on in terms of data and interventions, um, and the hard work that their staff are, are really doing. So, um, appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. Um, we will now entertain comments or questions from the board. If any board members wish to speak on this item.
I just have a question.
Okay, trustee Martin has a question.
Um, I'd like to know the student population and also the age range.
Thank you for your question. So we are a TK through eighth-grade school. So our student population, so we have a breakdown. We have a little bit less than forty percent white population at this time. Largest is Hispanic. We have a small African-American population, as well as a small Asian population. The sixty-four percent socioeconomic disadvantaged, uh, almost twenty percent special education population.
Yeah, wow. How many staff do you have?
I believe we're close to seventy-five staff, currently about four hundred and eighteen students.
And seventy-five staff, is that including what we consider classified staff, support staff?
Yeah.
As well as teachers?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Trustee, trustee Alvarado.
Yes, my question, uh, regarding the, the data with the California dashboard, is that um the data from this year that hasn't been officially published on the website, or is it last year's? What year is it?
Yeah, the data that has not been published, which is embargoed currently, which will be released on the dashboard next Thursday, is not the numbers that, uh, Arthur was speaking to. It's last year's testing cycle.
So it may be different. Is there a possibility?
The official, the official results from last year's testing cycle have been published, so those are the official results.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yep. Erin, nice to see you. Um, a couple years ago, there was like some questions about special education, so uh, can you walk us through what you've done to make sure you're servicing, you know, uh, all, you know, specifically, do you ask any special needs and disabilities?
Excellent question. So we have changed the model of our leadership. So at the time, we were trying to share a position, so I'm not sure what time specifically you're speaking at, because we did go through some growth challenges. So what you saw, for a period of time, we did not have the funding available for us to have a separate principal on site, as well as a director of special education. So since we've been in existence for a longer period of time, we do now have Dr. Jocelyn Roberts, who's been with us for multiple years, who leads our special education department, ensuring that we remain in compliance. We have a phenomenal relationship. Uh, we have moved to the Eldorado Charter Sopa, which offers additional support, as well as professional development. Um, we, you know, SACE has also evolved, so everyone's doing their minute tracking online, so everything is digital. That also does help immensely. We do a lot of services onsite, as well as having contracted services. So we're able to provide whatever needs need to be serviced, we're able to provide those.
Got it. Thanks for that. And then non-academic related, but you know, uh, traffic tends to be an issue, and that, that's, you know, that's a town with the Tri-City and Casita and Starbucks, um, so a question that, you know, how have you, how have you been working with the city to try and mitigate some of these concerns? And obviously now, uh, there's so much power you, uh, there's only so much power you have, obviously, now, engaging a city and city council.
Absolutely. Appreciate the question. So back in 2018, we had the opportunity to acquire the property at the uh, entrance of our location. It used to be a service convenience center. So at that point, we were able to increase the drive lane size. So the queuing size has been almost doubled. So we are not blocking the lane. We've worked with Tri-City Christian, as well as Casita, to make sure that our ending times, uh, do not coordinate, or they do coordinate, they're not at the same time of the day. But what we did find with traffic studies with the city of Vista, all that traffic isn't necessarily the schools, it's the moon throw fair, right, to make it to the seventy-eighth freeway. So our population has also changed over the years. So when we first opened our doors, we had a large majority of families who were coming via automobile. And now we have a lot of families who are walking to the site, or carpooling, or we have the extensive ELOP after-school program with Boys and Girls Club. So now, a lot of the families are not even in the drive lane because they're at the school until six o'clock when they're picked up. So it does ameliorate some of that issue. Working with the city, we've also ensured that there's multiple entrances. You know, when you drive by, you see there's one that's closer to Vista Way, and then there's one that's farther down. So we block that further entrance to ensure that those cars who are turning from Casita, we don't have our cars impacting that area. It's completely blocked off, so they can't enter/exit. They're driving through our lane, they're exiting on Huff, and then they make that turn, whether they're going to Vista, Vista Way, or they're gonna come back around, and they're gonna go to Emerald. So there's been quite a few changes for traffic mediation.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
So let's see, uh. Are there, uh, the public hearing on Bellamente Charter Renewal Petition is now closed. Oh, wait. Okay, um, now we will move on to six A, public comments. We have quite a few old cards. So we'll start with the first one, Eden Cohen.
Hello, board. I'm Eden Cohen, and we are Mission Vista Seniors here today, representing Mission Vista's Justice Club. I'd like to start off by thanking everybody for being here today and for giving me, as well as other students and parents, the opportunity to speak. The issue that Justice Club has come to bring to your attention today is a lack of school-provided transportation to and from Mission Vista High School that has left many students struggling to get to school on time. Mission Vista lacks routes to Fallbrook, Boncel, and Oceanside. For example, the total population of students within BUSD is currently around eighteen thousand. According to a People Transformation Information Study, the district currently transports about fourteen hundred students, putting the percent of BUSD students who take the bus at seventeen percent. The national average of students who take the bus is thirty-three percent, meaning that the students of BUSD are half as likely to take the bus. This is, this issue is amplified by a Mission Vista's policy of tardy sweeps, especially before first period. This has placed additional stress on top of students who already have to keep up with challenging coursework and extracurricular activities. It has also burdened parents who are already taking on busy work schedules to direct through heavy morning traffic on an already busy highway, resulting in many students being dropped off before school even starts to ensure that parents can make it to work on time. High costs of living in California have also served as a barrier to transportation, with the average family reporting that transportation is their second most expensive finance. According to payscale.com, Oceanside's housing expenses are eighty-two percent higher than the national average, and transportation expenses are forty-two percent higher than the, the national average. This makes accessible transportation paramount to compensate for the financial burden and pressure that student families are placed under. Furthermore, housingmatters.urban.org reports that twenty percent of low-income families own no vehicles, and sixty percent student, and sixty percent of student low-income families primarily ride the bus. The lack of transportation options, options directly targets to forty-three percent of BUSD students who come from economically challenged families. who come from economically challenged families, usnews.org, as well as other students who don't attend their neighborhood school. With VUSD's large demographic of lower-income students, but low demographic of students using public transport, it's clear that the students who need reliable transportation the most are still unable to get it. Board, I want to stress to you the importance and scale of this issue. A Bloomberg study found that a one-minute increase in school commute times was associated with a one-point-three reduction in sleep. As I'm sure we can all agree, high schools should be getting more sleep. However, with the lack of transportation, many students are sleeping less. With this added on top of the cumulative stress of schoolwork and other difficulties, which is again economically, which is something nearly half the VUSD population struggles with, meeting the recommended ten hours of sleep for teenagers is nearly impossible. We understand you are aware of this issue and you have been working on it as we reviewed the meeting, the we reviewed the meeting in twenty-twenty-four, highlighting the improvements in of Mission Vista's buses from one to three. However, three buses are still not sufficient. We acknowledge that Mission Vista is a school choice. However, Justice believes that public education should still be accessible to all, especially because Mission Vista provides a competitive academic atmosphere that many students want to be a part of. Transportation barriers should never be a reason why students choose not to attend a public high school and will only further perpetuate the wealth and education gap. I want to share with you the preliminary findings of my research project. I started this one to study this very issue.
Thank you, Eden. You sent us that on a note. Thank you. Michael Davis.
Ladies and gentlemen of the the board and students, members, thank you for your time this evening. I choose to believe that all of you up here today care about our children or yourselves and your your peers and want them to succeed, feel safe and grow into great young men and women. And as as a father of four, I deeply respect that. It is from that shared concern I speak to you now. Due to some of the individuals in the audience, I've got to work on the fly here, so bear with me. But you guys heard a lot of statistics, information on decisions that you have to make with with Bellmonte and you're going to hear others. And imagine though, if those studies were, the information that you hear were provided by sources that were untrue to what they were telling you. That's the case. And in good faith, I'm going to assume it, you'll see where I'm going in a minute. So bear with me. In good faith, I assume that many of you are are unaware of the origin or origins of some of the content that's allowed and suited in California for our schools and our classrooms and our curriculum. That would be data from McKinsey Institute that was received from, we'll say, individuals with life long prison sentences and Nazi concentration camp runners who would give children the option of his room or the chamber. And then afterwards, would have them go to the the chamber anyway. And these, this data was collected and distributed with Alfred Kinsey back in the forties, part of the Kinsey Institute. And that is where we got our modern-day comprehensive sexuality education or CSE. And it's that very framework and data, I'm sure that if if information like that came out on Bella Bellmonte, you might might change your mind on how you might perceive and how you might move forward with some of the decisions you have to make. Well, a lot of that has permeated the libraries of even Roosevelt Elementary, Vista High School, books like Looking for Alaska. If if I were to go to any of your homes and read some of the content from these books to your children, I would rightfully be forcefully evacuated from your premises. Yet, because it's, if it's done on school property, it's considered educational and comprehensive. And I I disagree with that. There's no place for anything like that. There's no literary value to acts that are shown and verbalized. And as I understand it, the school boards have the ability and have the power to do something about that, although not checking off each individual title.
Thank you.
Gosh. Sorry.
Carrie Avina.
Hello, good evening. I am reading tonight from a member who couldn't make it, and this is called True Tales from TK. Good evening, board members, and community, student board members, cabinet. I'd like to share a story I call Tales from TK, a glimpse into what our youngest learners and staff are facing every day. One ordinary morning, a colleague and I found a student who wasn't feeling well outside the bathroom. As I escorted him to the office to see the nurse, I found the door locked with the lights off, unusual for a busy school day. Through the window, I saw movement, voices, things being thrown, a student yelling. Moments later, someone cracked the door and told me to wait. Inside, I caught a glimpse of what was happening. A TK student had taken over the office in full behavioral outburst. Staff members were trying to keep everyone safe, while the rest of us, including the sick child I was helping, waited in the hallway with nowhere to go and no way to get the support needed. Eventually, after about ten minutes, the office staff came to the door and let us in. The student was now calmly playing on the floor as if nothing had happened. But the real issue isn't this one story, but that this story is not unusual. It has become the norm. This kind of situation is happening every day in our TK classrooms, not just with one child, but often with ten or more. We have students eloping, hitting, kicking, and destroying classrooms and classroom materials while teachers and staff do their best to de-escalate and protect our students. Instead of joyful, play-rich learning, our TK teachers are managing crisis multiple times a day. And while these children deserve care and support, our teachers deserve it too. So tonight, I ask the board to take action. Please review the current level of support for TK classrooms. Talk to the TK classroom teachers and hear about their day-to-day experiences. Take note of how often aggressive outbursts occur in a class. How often teachers are being, teachers and staff are being hit, bit, kicked, or spat on. Understand how quick teachers are, how quick teachers are getting support and what type of support, and consider suggestions from TK teachers about what could be done to improve the learning environment for all TK students. Our youngest learners need calm, nurturing environments to thrive, and our teachers need the resources to make that possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Nazarian.
Thank you. Dear esteemed VUSD board members and community members of Vista, my name is Patty Nazarian, and I have been a proud school psychologist for VUSD for fifteen years. As we begin the first week of November, the National Association of School Psychologists and schools across the US are recognizing it as National School Psychology Week. This week celebrates the contributions of school psychologists and the important role they play in schools and communities, helping children thrive. This year's theme, Finding Your Path, recognizes the ways that school psychologists take an active role in helping everyone in their communities determine paths to learning, growth, and overall well-being that meets their unique needs. As I think about this theme, I can't help but see the parallels that it shares with our learner portrait to help shape our students be self-aware and focused on a hopeful future. Our adult portrait, having a student-centered approach in their interests and aspirations, and then also our system portrait and supporting future-oriented forward-thinking ideas. Over the last fifteen years, I have witnessed the amazing efforts that our district has made into fully supporting our students in every aspect of their education and their futures. And that includes the role of the school psychology in our district. As a school psychologist, we are at the forefront of advocating for student rights. We are part of vital teams when students experience crisis, and we help connect families with a variety of resources for mental health. We share our deep expertise through consultations, collaborations, and evidence-based practices to help students identify their strengths and skills for a successful future. And I want to thank our board today for all of the support you have given us so that we can provide the full spectrum of service delivery in helping our students succeed in school and in life. As we reflect on School Psychology Week, I am respectfully asking our board members to continue investing in our district school psychologists by sending the message that we are valued for all the things we do for our community. The school psychology role is a special one and one that you are able to help protect and preserve by ensuring that schools are well-staffed within a school psychologist to match the needs of our families. Thank you.
Ving Wang.
Good evening, members of the board, VUSD family. My name is Ving Wang, and I'm a school psychologist in Vista Unified. I'd like to share what we do and what's at stake when two positions remain unfilled after retirement due to financial constraints. A typical day might begin with an IEP for a student whose learning needs have long been uncertain. We rebuild trust with a family and craft a plan that brings both clarity and hope. Next, I test a student with a history of trauma and significant behavioral challenges, then provide cognitive behavior therapy to a student with autism who, through consistent counseling and intervention, has stayed successfully at his neighborhood school instead of being moved to a more restrictive setting. Later, I'm called to assess a student drawing violent and graphic content in class. I conduct a threat assessment, coordinate with administration and parents, and ensure the student receives the right support and care. Between crises, I teach a self-regulation lesson to a group of students who struggle with attention and social skills, model behavior plan strategies for staff, and meet with a PBIS team to strengthen our school-wide systems for positive behavior support and inclusion. Before the day ends, I call a parent about their child's anxiety and check in with a student in crisis. This is what school psychologists do every day. We hold space for students' emotional safety. We strengthen teachers' capacity to support learning, and we build systems that make schools safe, equitable, and responsive. VUSD serves about eighteen thousand five hundred students, and our psychologist-to-student ratio is already exceeding recommended levels. When positions go unfilled and psychologists are pulled from their schools to cover elsewhere, it means longer waits for evaluations, fewer counseling sessions, and weakened preventative systems. Students' needs go unmet until they become crises. Research shows that effective early intervention and PBIS can save tens of thousands of dollars per one hundred students by reducing discipline issues and unnecessary special education referrals. Prevention saves money, and more importantly, it saves kids. Filling these two vacancies isn't just a staffing issue, it's an equity issue. Every child in Vista Unified deserves consistent access to someone who knows their story, who believes in them, and who helps them thrive. Thank you for your time in prioritizing mental health, academic success, and the well-being of our students.
Thank you. Lieutenant Chant.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Doyle. I stand here tonight as a proud VUSD educator, community member, and former parent. Our community has the right to vote and decide on a bond. I'm an educator at Mona Vista Elementary School, which first began teaching students in Vista in nineteen sixty-three and has an amazing legacy in our community. Many of the parents, some of the grandparents, and even some of our educators or their family members attended our school. We have a loving family culture and great pride in our Bobcat community. As a school that did not receive any of the big LL-funded projects, we desperately need a bond. We have three toilets total for adults, which includes our staff, full-day EES preschool, and AM/PM staff. California law states that for thirty-six to fifty-five employees, we should have three toilets per gender. And if we have fifty-six to eighty employees, we should have four toilets per gender. California ed code says we should have one toilet per fifty male students, one urinal per one hundred males, and one toilet per thirty female students. Mona Vista does not meet these requirements. Just yesterday, I found out that even though a urinal in one of our student bathrooms has been out of commission for a while, the repairs are unlikely to happen until the long winter break because the pipes are so old that the repairs take a long time once started. This is not a one-time problem. We always seem to be having problems with the plumbing. While we did not receive any of the upgrades from the LL bond, a new school bond can make those upgrades possible. School bonds are essential to repairing our schools. Nine percent of our budget goes to facilities. Think what we could do if just six percent of our budget instead was freed up to go to other resources and opportunities that would benefit our students and staff. We need to advocate for stringent oversight that prioritizes that these funds be used for the infrastructure our schools desperately need before any new projects. I understand that adding bathrooms at Mona Vista is not ideal for ribbon-cutting, but it is essential to a school that has grown beyond the facilities we now have. Tearing up plumbing at old schools will not be awesome for photo ops, but using the bond for the infrastructure and the guts of our schools will ensure that they can continue to be used to educate our students for generations to come. The students of VUSD need us to work as a united front to advocate for the bond and the schools our students, colleagues, and communities deserve. Thank you for your time.
Moving on, we are ready to report from school-related organizations. Vista Teachers Association, Mississauga.
It's me again. Good evening, trustees, student trustees, superintendent Doyle, Dr. Doyle, cabinet, and members of the community. This week, the national news reminded us of the story of Abigail Swerner, who was shot by her six-year-old student. She and many other staff members reported to administration their concern about the student causing harm. And administration did not act upon the concerns, and that jeopardized safety of both students and staff. This is a common fear in our schools in real time. Just today, there was an incident at one of our schools that had members calling me, wondering if VUSD's protocols put safety of students and staff first. There's not a week that goes by that I do not hear Tales from TK in which teachers are being injured in classrooms or the interclassrooms fearing being assaulted, bitten, hit, or their classrooms destroyed. Our educators have had professional development that is trauma-informed. They are experts at compassion, at connection, but they need support. They need to feel the administration takes both their, that takes their concerns seriously. Both our students and staff deserve learning and working conditions where they do not fear injury. And all of this comes even more urgent when we look at the proposed federal budget cuts that could take more than twenty-five million dollars from Vista schools, including eight-point-seven million in special education alone, with additional cuts to programs serving English learners and the nutritional services that keep so many of our students healthy enough to learn. These cuts just aren't numbers. They need fewer aides, fewer psychologists, larger caseloads, and reduced services. We heard from the psychologist tonight and how they are already spread thin. These cuts threaten the progress we've made in equity and inclusion. And while it is only six percent of our budget, it is still significant. And as we look ahead to the work of rebuilding trust, securing a bond, and navigating potential budget cuts, we must also ensure that the people who make our schools thrive feel secure in their own livelihoods. When educators are supported, our entire system becomes stronger, safer, and more sustainable. We're seeing districts across California take innovative steps to strengthen that partnership. Just this month, UTLA established an annual superintendent evaluation process, giving educators a formal structured voice in the direction of their district. It is a model rooted in collaboration and accountability, one that recognizes that educators' insight is essential to building a healthy and effective school system. And I want to acknowledge that we've seen positive movement here in Vista as well, particularly in the district's commitment to improving our benefits and the six-percent salary increase over three years. The passage of our tentative agreement with the district now covering about eighty-five percent of the Kaiser Plan shows that our shared advocacy can lead to progress. My members see that effort and appreciate it. Our goals are aligned: strong schools, safe classrooms, and the trust of our community. If we stay focused on those shared priorities, supporting our staff, protecting our students, and safeguarding critical funding, we can move forward together with renewed strength and unity. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, our California School Employees Association, Mrs. Ramos.
Good evening, trustees, student board members, Dr. Doyle and cabinet and the rest of the community. I want to start our report to the board with exciting news, and that's that as of last week, we have tentative agreed- and that's that as of last week, we have tentative agreed on our successor contract. So we hope, yay, we hope to have this in your agenda next month to be approved. And I want to take a minute to just highlight something very key to show the progress we've made in highlighting the value of collaboration, and that is we had a total of nine bargaining sessions for this successor. And mind you, not all of them were full days. There were a couple hours. Versus the last time that we negotiated our successor contract, it took thirteen full days. That's a huge improvement. We want to meet with the district, negotiate our needs, understand where we stand, right, but collaborate and let our knowns be heard. And I just want to say, I pointed out because we feel heard, right? You know, this wasn't dragged out for a long time, or rather, we felt we were heard, understood, and we came to compromise. Let's, you know, let's discuss what you want to see, what we want to see, but also understand where the district stands and what their goals are. So that in itself is a success. So kudos to the district in working with us and making progress. Along with that, last, oh, well, I do want to, before I move on, I do want to recognize, thank you, Trustee Martin, for being the board's liaison in sitting in those bargaining sessions. I hope that the board sees the benefit of having a liaison sitting in negotiations. But I also want to, so keep offering if we're open to having that liaison, because most likely we'll say yes. But I also want to recognize that from the time I've been serving and representing our members as the chapter president, this is the first board that I can proudly say that I have a direct contact with each one of you. And that speaks volumes, because we want to be available to you all to understand the work that we do, be willing to answer any questions that you may have, any concerns. And again, it's the sign of collaboration. So thank you for your support, all of you. Now I will move on to the next topic. So in our last report last month, we talked about or mentioned that the district this year created guidelines for the use of AI for student use, but that we hadn't heard my least classified staff on the use of AI in the workplace. Well, I'm happy to report that the district has presented the opportunity to form a task force to specifically talk about that use in classified employees' workplace, which is very key, right, because it's here, but yet we don't discuss it. So again, our value of trust, transparency, right? If we know we're utilizing it, or rather, any type of AI, let's openly discuss it and see the impacts it has and the benefits that they have to on employees. And then last, I want to mention that we worked with the district to specifically HR to have employee forums, or I should say job classification forums. And I'll just highlight one specific one, which was the community liaisons. This happened at the end of August, in which community liaison voiced their concerns. One of the key things that I got from them, listening to them, which was the role of community liaisons has to have some structure in which that the same expectation is set at each school site, that a liaison by moving to another site should not change, right? Because they were struggling with the changes. And the other, the other thing that they recognized is this school year, a lot of them are splitting their assignment, I guess, between two school sites, which is very challenging. So they were told that they're expected to serve families at two different school sites, but where are the resources? Where are the guidelines, right, to make them, set them up to succeed? So in return, the outcome, rather, of this forum, the district has decided to create a handbook to create these guidelines and expectations that are clear across the board for all liaisons across the district, whether you're working for a district department or a school site. But I want to say even more on that is that the district shared with us that this is just the beginning. This is the first job family in which a handbook will be created, but there's plans to create such a thing for the rest of the job families. And again, I want to stress how important and such a success this is. Why? A year ago, exactly, November of twenty twenty-four, our CCA report mentioned retention. There's a lot of conversation and talk about recruitment, but yet there's no conversation or milestones to meet in regards to retaining our staff. This is one way to retain our employees, is having this handbook. Why? A lot of the feedback I got from members is when we're hired, we're just thrown to the work site with no guidance, training whatsoever. It's upon us to go and ask for the help. But when we're new, we don't know where to begin, right? So it's just one way for them to feel successful right at the start and hopefully share that knowledge as new people come in, right? Is passing that knowledge and being a community within the classified staff, support staff. Because in essence, we support families, right? And when we all understand what our expectations and jobs are and we're equipped to perform well, it only benefits our students and our families. So I'll conclude with that. I just wanted to show these great, successful, successful progress that we've made in collaborating with the district. Let's continue that. We're on the right track. Thank you. Thank you.
And we have a deal report. I hope I put your name. Is it Ms.? Ms. Gudzovskaya?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alena Gudzovskaya. I'm the president of Delux. And today I have an update to you from our last meeting. So Delux conducted its first official meeting on Monday, October twenty. At this meeting, members participated in the yearly Delux training. Elections for parliamentarian and secretary were held for two years' term from October twenty-five to October twenty-seven. So our new parliamentarian is Mariela Palestrini from Vista High School, and our new secretary is Herlinda Valdovinis from Roosevelt Middle School. And there are two new boarding members for the second year of term from October twenty-four to October twenty-six is President Anna Cruz, Vice President Alena Gudzovskaya, Secretary Juliana Karen. A room was met with seventeen from twenty-two schools represented. There are no recommendations from this meeting since no task other than training were completed. And the next official Delux meeting will be held on Monday, November seventeen, at five thirty at the multilingual center, Room F. Thank you for attention.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to discussion action items. So ratify and approve purchase orders. If entering a motion to approve that. I move to approve the, I'm sorry. Named by trustee Alvarado. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Markov. Any further, any questions? Any further discussion? Same none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. And one abstention, because I own stock, a little bit of stock in one of the companies that we regularly do business with. And while it is not necessarily a conflict of interest, I want to avoid any impropriety, any appearance of impropriety. So the motion carries for with one abstention. Okay, and so now, eight B is to approve the annual organizational meeting date set for Thursday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-five. This is just a formality. All it is, we were, this is the meeting that we were led to do, president and new officers. So I will entertain a motion to approve the annual organization meeting date set for Thursday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-five at six P M. I move to approve eight B. Moved by trustee Alvarado. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Markov. Any further questions? Discussion? Student board members, do you have any questions? So same none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any of those? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to the consent calendar. Is there anything that anybody wants to pull? Okay, trustee Martin?
I'd like to pull nine A, fourteen E, and fourteen I.
Nine A, fourteen E, and fourteen I. Anybody else?
I would like to pull thirteen A.
Thirteen A. Anybody else have a thing to go? Okay, same none. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items nine A, thirteen A, fourteen E, and fourteen I.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Markov. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Martin. Any further questions or discussion? Same none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving to nine A.
These are the board minutes, and I need to make a board minute correction. Page six, second line from the bottom. And I believe it was at the end of the sentence, it says R B V baseball. It should read R B V softball.
Okay, anyone else have any discussion about that? Okay, so seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve nine A with, is that the only change? I'll approve nine A with the change, with that change that trustee Martin outlined, changing that word baseball to softball. So moved. Okay, moved by trustee Martin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Markov. Any further discussion? All those in there say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving to thirteen A.
Thank you, Dr. Shigala.
You're welcome.
Do we have, well, I guess I can just read it.
I can pull it up if you'd like.
Yeah, Michael, good. And just page five is good.
Give me a moment. Here's five.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, so I read through this document and just kind of, but this was something that kind of stood out to me. These were other needs, and I guess it's really just a kind of a gentle question to you guys. Because like one of the comments here, it says, families need more opportunities to connect directly with the campus and celebrate their child. Another sentence here says, families want their kids to have more say over their learning and to continue to implement the VUSD, the U S D, my plan, et cetera. And then it continues down, you know, teaching soft skills, provide parents with opportunities. And so my, I guess what, I read these comments, and then my question is, are these being addressed and how?
Yeah, so part of the idea of the SPSAs is to get input from both families and staff and students around how do we make our school better? And so it isn't necessarily deficiencies, but these are things that we are seeking to do better in its actual guidance. Because even when you go through the travel, right, like a lot of it is, we want to spend our money in this way, send people here, we want to do this contract for this. These are the comments and the content that help feed those decisions to be made.
Okay, yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick question. Next one says like from ELAC. Is that who read the last of those? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and I would, I would say if a school had, we have no recommendations, that would be a red flag problem. So this is great, especially that you can tell that they're getting the ELAC input.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great question.
Any further questions? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve item thirteen A. So I move to approve thirteen A. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Markov, seconded by trustee Martin. Sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to fourteen E.
So we approved the placement of a portable at BMMS not too long ago, and now I'm seeing that there is a change order coming in which totals to be almost a third of the whole original contract. And I have a couple of questions. One, first of all, has the portable been placed on the camps?
So the portable has been purchased and fabricated, and it's located in the vicinity of the campus. It's not in its final resting list.
That's wonderful news. I am disheartened to see that we're going to have to pay an additional hundred and something thousand because, and I need to know why we're getting all these different change orders. Are we, are the bidders not, not going to the full length to look for everything that they're going to need? Is it something happening within fiscal services? But this is outrageous, that it's going to cost a third of the original contract, an additional third. And before we end this discussion, I think the board needs to talk about canceling that prefabbed already before we spend another hundred and something thousand dollars.
Well, why don't we see if we can get through the questions as I understood them? So I think the overarching question here is, why is there a cost increase? And there is specific questions as to, is this regarding the bidders and the bidders alone? Or is there more to it? And the answer to that is, there's more to it. So oftentimes, when you get into a smaller-scale construction project like this and you lift up an item, for example, this was a portable that was placed on something called native, which is just general soil, and you lift it up, you find a different condition because you can't lift it up to look underneath it. And in this case, what they found is that there is no drainage in the area, and that drainage is required. Now, that's going to require about two inches of what's called a coating beneath it. So that is part of the increase. The second is that when you go through, just like if you were doing work on your house, sometimes you open the walls, you find out that wiring and other conditionings are not the same. And in the case of this one, we found that some of the fire alarm systems that connect back into the school and other work would have to be conducted. So that is the primary amount that is involved in this, is work that was not known until we got rid of the old portable. And then they went back, the constructors went and took a look and found a series of conditions. They worked with the engineers. The engineers took a look and concurred with the constructors that additional work should be conducted in order to safely place this for longevity of the unit, and that's the majority of it. Are there some variances on the bidding? There's some slight variances, but overall, it's not a major bidding issue. It's a change in scope because of what was underneath.
So when they went out to look at the property to bid, did they not realize that it was sitting on dirt? Did they not realize that they could core under it and look at the base?
No, you cannot core under an existing building.
Can, at least a foot or two.
No, ma'am, not under the building as it is. They have to get it up before they realize some of these issues. Now, there is, when you place a building, oftentimes, there is a general a general assessment that's made as to what you expect to see there. And in this case, they did not find any drainage or any items under the building. It may have been what led to the deterioration of this particular unit as well as it was placed on native. And again, after they realized there was nothing there underneath it, not even gravel, that it was just mud, that they needed to do something extra to it, and that is the bulk of this work. That also is the result of why it damaged some of the wiring.
So there was no crawl space, the platform for the flooring was right on the surface?
My understanding, it was right on. Now, much of this came in while it was out, and there isn't somebody to come back and report back, but that's from my reading of the assessments. I will be getting into the matter further, but this was not necessarily a matter of bidding. This is more of a, there was a great deal of unforeseen after. after they removed everything, got everything and began to take a look at items.
We are going into a fiscally very difficult time period from what you've been telling the board. And now to have to cough up another hundred and something thousand dollars, I, I find this absolutely egregious, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So at one point, since the portable is not on the property, are we in a position where we can now reject it because of the additional work that is now required for this?
No, ma'am. We, there is a fabrication of the portable that took place. We have already received the portable. Once you receive it, actually before you receive it, when you order it, you are financially liable to pay for it. You're contracted to pay for it. So that is done. This is now the additional work that would go with that in order to place it. Otherwise, the portable is just a sitting unit.
So we have other sites that you could use classroom space and instead of putting more money into B M M S because of the gravel or whatever is needed, the drainage, instead of spending another hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, could we not find another site to put this new purchased portable?
Well, in theory, you can do that, but it's also likely wherever you put the portable, you're going to have to do some work for the portable of some kind. So it would depend upon where we put it. Depending upon where we put it, we may find that we have to do more than a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of work. I mean, we have to do two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand dollars of work, or we may have to do fifty thousand. I can't speak to that.
I know. We've done that before when we were talking about the original V T A space. So, um, I'm very concerned with spending this money, uh, considering everything that you're telling us, including insolvency in twenty twenty-eight. Um, I think that we should be cutting back and not spending. And so I would entertain any ideas of how not to spend another hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars on three hundred and twelve thousand dollar portable. Please give me some other option than this.
No, ma'am, I can give you no other ideas. I'm not a licensed civil engineer. A licensed civil engineer took a look at this and this was their assessment. And I will be concurring with their assessment as they are licensed civil.
Just for a second to release our students. It is now seven ten. You may go. And, um, so someone will be back there to sign your cards. Thank you. Continue. Trustee Al, Al Brode, do you have something to say?
So.
If, no, all she's done.
I'm done.
It's just, um, just today, uh, at my school site where I work, we were told that, um, our lounge, our, um, psychologist's room, our, our, social workers' room had to be completely demolished. It's an old portable. And there was fungus that had been growing. They've spent about five years mitigating the expenses from the underlayment to the walls and the fungus comes back. Well, it turns out it's because there's no drainage underneath it. There's nothing to support. It was placed like many portables were when we first got them directly on the ground where you didn't have gravel or drainage. The point is the fungus just coming, kept coming back and it was putting Band-Aids and spending money and money and money over the course of four years. And of course, fungus, I'm sure that's not the healthiest for people, but anyways, it just, that just happened today. And so we, they have to rip up everything. And I think it's a, a story of portables in school districts when they were put in, uh, twenty-five, thirty years ago, where we're going to keep running into this situation. If, if you don't have schools, um, you know, I, I, one of our speakers spoke to what's not pretty? Well, that's plumbing and drainage. And, and so a lot of, you know, schools need that, that type of support. If not, you still have water, mold, funguses that are going to continue to, to to cause problems and, and we're going to have to keep spending money on it and putting Band-Aids on it until things are done correctly. And, and I think it's going to reoccur with other portables across the district.
Well, that's an interesting point, and I think it's a very valid point, but that means that we should probably anticipate that when we're getting these things out, that there's going to be some, this is going to be a factor so that, you know, it just make that assumption that we'll probably, you have to do that.
I, I think that's a wonderful idea, and we spoke about this. There are some laws about that. We can only plan on what's called a ten percent over contingency for, and, and we, we do, particularly when we go to oversights. But you're not permitted to just put a bid out in public bidding where you just theorize about the future and you, you can't, um, do that financially. You can maximize it at ten percent, which we oftentimes do. And when it comes back, as trustee Martin has rightfully pointed out, at a thirty percent, three percent level, we are obligated to come back to the board and to present to you and say, this is, these are the findings. And that is not something foreseen. And I know, um, I certainly feel a frustration over this as well. And an example of a frustration that we have felt twice over on this same campus, which is our oldest campus, is that we had to change the G M P for one project on the, on there because of an underground river that flows under the parking lot and all of the items. On a second, where we, uh, some years ago, one of the early projects where we did a pool, we came in and we found all sorts of other things, but we're not legally allowed to just theorize. And I wish we could.
But when you present it to us, Ken, is there a way to say, look, there's probably, it's probably going to be just like, you know, in the past, maybe just, you know, present it so that we're, it's, we're not surprised by this.
I'm happy.
Code.
Yeah, I'm happy to always present to the board and, and I will share with you, uh, upfront and try and, and do my best. And, and I'm happy for the feedback to do my diligence. We have school sites that are in absolute desperate need and there are going to be a lot of unforeseens. Oh, I think, but particularly when it comes to Vista Magnet Middle and a few others. We can always, we, we have a history of demonstrating, no matter what diligence we do in advance, when you open it up, it comes back regularly higher.
No, and I, I get that. I understand that. And, and I think that a certain amount is expected, but I agree with trustee Martin that this is thirty-three percent is a lot. Um, and given that what trustee Al Brode just said, that this is a very common thing, that at least with portables, it's something that we might be able to predict. So maybe just even a notice that like, hey, this is one of those portables that was put in place in the eighties. And so back then, uh, we can reasonably e- expect that there's going to be probably significant, doesn't even have to have a number, just like significant change order to this.
We will give it a try at, at the next portable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, you know, I've been thinking about Vista Magnet for a little while and as I knew came up and, uh, uh, so Vista Magnet is in the center of Vista. It's right across the street from city hall. It is near downtown Vista. Um, and I would, you know, you can talk about funding and it being the oldest campus and I would approach the city. I don't know if, if, if you and Matt are the, the folk to do this or not. But, um, you know, the city uses the property. It, you know, the Chamber of Commerce runs the, the strawberry festival there, for instance. And I don't know, think it would be completely unreasonable to say, hey, help us beautify this. You know, like, like I think that, uh, trustee Martin, um, this might have been last month or the month before, was talking about the, uh, it was the historic plaza that got put up, okay? And that's right on the frontage road there, you know, net between city hall and Vista Magnet. And, you know, like, like I actually think that the city would be interested in, you know, like helping, because, you know, the, the district reflects the city, the city reflects the district. And I, and I think that, that, you know, they could, um, I, I actually had a conversation with one of the council members, uh, council member Fox, uh, just kind of like talking about how, uh, we could look at collaboration in certain areas and one of the ideas was a fence around the property. Uh, you know, like a, a nice wrought iron fence that, that would make the, you know, would benefit the city because it would be pretty, but it would also benefit the school um, in terms of, you know, upgrading the fence around the, the property. And I, I just don't know, like, if we have, like, projects like a historic plaza that's right there and you got, you know, right across from city hall, you know, hey, this is a, you know, historic area. Why don't you throw some funds this way, you know, just to help us out?
Yeah, we've actually done that with the city over the years, not on that campus. With the city, um, it's called joint use agreements.
Sure.
Um, perfect example of that is V A P A. Um, and so we use V A P A during the school day. And then the Linda Road Center, which is the gem next to V A P A, and then the entire field, um, belongs to the city in the evening and that you kind of joint fund some of those things. So I think what you're proposing is to explore some kind of a joint use of that facility.
Yeah, I, I, and just, I mean, at the property, I mean, like, like I know that, you know, i- if you're, you know, I mean, you look at the field there, you look at just different aspects of it, and you know, the, the strawberry run comes right up on that field. They, they park on it. And so, you know, it, it's something that if you, you know, you, you could ask the city.
Markov, I'm kind of thinking we're on topic now.
Okay, no problem.
Do you have anything?
We get the feedback though.
Yeah. Do you have anything to contribute like, uh, reg- regarding to this project?
This specific project.
There's anything the city can help with?
You can do. I don't know.
Okay. Um, I do have one question. Um, is there possibly another site on Vista Magnet that we could put this new portable on where we would not need to put as much work into it?
I, I don't know any off the top of my head, uh, because of the workflow of the campus, but I'd be happy to explore further.
Yeah, why don't we look at that? Cause that might be, uh, that might be an alternative. If it would only cost, you know, maybe thirty thousand dollars to put it, to, you know, put it on a new site and do the work that's needed for that. That would be a lot more cost effective than repairing this old site.
My last comment, uh, uh, we are supposed to be removing portables and I do, I know that I voted to put this one back on there. Um, this is going to cost very close to a half a million dollars for one portable. And I just can't get over that. So let's try and make sure that we don't come into this position again, please.
I agree with you, trustee Martin. I agree.
And, and just, can I add like one more question regarding the one that, you know, that it was being replaced? It's not, is, is the one that is, that's, you know, be replacing, is that, I mean, that needs to happen. I mean, you can't use essentially, or is there something else that you could do there?
Let me see if I can understand the question. Are we asking the one that removed? If there's anything we can do with it?
Is it removed and gone?
It is demolished and gone. It is.
It was not usable.
Yeah, it wa- it was, it was in what we call condemned state. We, we condemned it and it is.
Yeah, we had that conversation. That was one of the things that we.
And the other thing to note is that, um, the, the, the staff needs that room. Right now they're doubling up.
Okay, so, um, at this point, um, is there any further discussion? Question? Okay, yeah, I will enter in a motion to approve item, um, fourteen, fourteen E. I move to approve fourteen E. Move by trustee, um, Al Brode. Is there a second?
Is it, is it, um, can we amend this now or do we?
You can, you can, well, there's not a second, so that you can do it, you can, uh, amend it.
Okay, so I would, I would like to amend it.
Uh, uh, trustee Al Brode could amend it. There's, there she wanted to. So go ahead and propose.
Okay, so the proposed amendment would be, uh, to approve this item, pending, uh, exploration if there's a cheaper area to place it.
Okay.
Okay, is, are you in a mode of determining the motion?
I don't know. Because what, who do we have to ask? What expert do we have to ask to pay for that? Um, an engineer? Right? I need more information. Um, I, what I do know about Vista Magnet Middle School is, is right in the center of our city. It's the, uh, magnet school that has the most, uh, similar demographic to what our district is. It serves a lot of folks. And, um, it's very popular and accessible. We were talking about accessibility. So I, I want to give that school what it needs, um, based on its age and, um, and, and not pay another engineer to find out yes or no. What, what if they come back? They, there's not another spot and then I don't know what it costs for to talk to a civil engineer for thirty thousand dollars.
I think just, just from the perspective of the conversation, very good conversation. I would recommend if you wanted us to explore, it would be best not to approve the item rather than amend item because there's too many questions. We would have to go back and investigate that and bring it back. Um, but the delay would, you know, it potentially costs more money in the future. The more you delay, the more, more expensive it becomes. So it's just, these are considerations for you to, to think about.
What's the, um, what's needed for, what would it help?
Well, right now it's a, it's a classroom. So we're, we're utilizing another space, um, you know, that's awkward at this point, but working. Um, so.
That space is, is it like a English class? Is it a beginning class?
Well, right now I believe it's a history.
Yeah. It, it's a history class. I think the biggest concern with this particular site is it's had ongoing plumbing issues. And the last few times that we've had the issue, we've had to close wings to the site. And, uh, we've not just doubled up. We've done everything we can to get by it. And now we're short yet another room. So I think that's the issue.
I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion second. Any further discussion?
Does this include the amendment or?
It, no, it does not include the amendment. Okay. Um, so all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Trustee Markov?
Uh, I, I.
You're, you're an aye?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion carries three, two. Right. Uh, okay, and then trustee Martin, uh, item fourteen I.
Yeah, I was.
Shocks, paving.
Paving.
Same issue, um, coming back with another change order. And this is for the asphalt right out here at the district office. And my understanding of the reading is that there were dips or two inch, something two inch, and they have to come back and they have to grade all this. It, it, is it destructive? Is there any way we can just go with the, with where it is? Is it gathering pooling water? And again, another change order. And I've sat here for a year and watched all these change orders come in and we have to do something better than this.
Perfect. Well, this is a change order of eight thousand one hundred dollars. The actual project is underbid by over a hundred thousand. Um, but when we got into the project itself, what occurred is when you look at the entry gates where the buses are and others, they started to go in and grind, they found that the underlying sub area um, was, was in need of extra work. The change order is for eight thousand one hundred dollars. And the other alternative is, is that you pull out all of the paving and you repave all of it, which is substantially more. So this was the lesser of the two options for this item.
It's my understanding that in the reading, it said it was the district office. Now you're saying it's the transportation?
Well, it's actually all the district office when we contract is both here, this parking lot and down below the transportation center. This was everything that was done.
Where's the damage?
Well, at the entry, when you enter, which is the heaviest, uh, areas for going in and out, buses are extraordinarily heavy. We actually have seen this in different spaces. Uh, you may have noted that we leased a property in example to the city where the fire department was. The fire department went over our pavement and it cracked and the city paid to, in this case, replace all of it. Our pavement's fairly old, so where the buses were required a lot of extra grinding work in order to get it done. And that is the nature of this change order.
The entrance to the.
Down below. Yeah, so there's multiple entrances. There's one for maintenance down below and then there's a second out the back. That's the, uh, the routing.
But he's referring to the down below area.
Yeah.
I understand that this is only eight thousand dollars. And again, we are being told by you and Dr. Doyle that we are in extreme financial trouble in a couple of years. So I understand only eight thousand dollars, but in the last four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars plus eight thousand dollars, now you are at a half a million dollars. So can you tell me where we're going to find this money?
This money is from restricted fund from general, from Fund Forty, general fund restricted is where these funds come from. This is not the unrestricted budget. Thank you for the question.
Further questions?
Yeah, I mean, like, you, you talked to us about change orders. I mean, being on the board, they happen all the time. It's not like.
Issueable.
Well, actually the change.
They happen for other school districts as well.
Yeah, actually the change, yeah, the change order ratio, some of the change orders legally used to not come to the board. The change order ratio came, so even minor change orders of this nature now go to the board. We used to be allowed threshold rates much higher where we would just proceed, um, because there is a normal sort of way that construction happens. So some of these will come back to you that, um, were normally wouldn't. Um, we actually have written about this in the Friday lever on several occasions and I can re-include it. So it's understood that there are times where change orders are going to happen. Now, change orders are twofold. You can have a total project budget and then the bidding comes. So sometimes, for example, you can have a total project budget where we estimate that the project will be five hundred thousand dollars. Okay? And when we go to bid, you have to take the low bid on a project that size. And they may bid at it at three hundred and fifty thousand. That's what you approve. It doesn't necessarily mean that we think that it would be that. You have to approve it at three fifty. But then when we come back to you on a change order where they say, well, it turns out you may have been correct on these things, the change order means is that they're legally justified in. The change order means is that they're legally justified in asking for additional funds. Because it's not part of the scope of what they thought would happen. We then have a change order. You can still have change orders that raise the amount compared to what was approved and you're still below budget. That's that's the nature of the legality of it.
Is there a school district in San Diego County that doesn't have change orders that they got it right for the first time?
Hmm, I do not know of any school district in California that doesn't have change orders.
Well, I want to be clear. There are many projects that we complete that don't have change orders. Some do. That is correct, but many don't, just like other districts.
Well, and there's two types of change orders that so we can be specific. There are change orders that are within budget. Those are happening all of the time. It's just when a change order goes above the budget, it comes back to you.
Well, you just said that the original was a hundred thousand dollars and this change order is eight thousand. So why is that coming before us?
The original was three hundred and thirty-three thousand. It went over a five thousand dollar threshold. And now even the most minimal one that goes above the budget, we have to bring to you.
Okay, I got you. It's still only, this is only what, two four percent or something of the entire? I I'm going off the top and I got here.
Less less than two percent, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Pass math, two two point four percent.
Yeah, two percent.
One last thing, you just said that. There are times that you may not want us to approve something, but we go ahead and we approve it, even though you know it was a low bid. Did I get that right?
No, ma'am, I'm saying legally, when we have the low bid, we have to accept. And I'm not saying you, we have to accept the low bidder. As part of public contracting. So it's not it's not about you. It's about what public contracting says.
Okay, so you aren't saying that.
No, no, ma'am, not at all. Thank you for clarifying.
That's actually a frustration point for us is that we have to take the little bit.
Yeah.
And there are instances where a little bit comes in and the bidder knows full well that she they're going to do a change order later.
Okay, that happens in construction. That's my concern that this is continuing to happen.
Okay, I'm gonna cut it off. Is uh unless there's a anybody else have a question? Okay, I will undertake a motion to approve item fourteen, I. I move to approve fourteen, I. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed?
Today.
But uh, any abstentions? Motion carries uh for one. Trustee.
It was trustee Martin.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on. Item fifteen, uh, the dates for next year.
So Chris, if you want to give them a little overview of that one.
Yes, so. Trustees, this is just for you to take home with you tonight. And look at your very busy schedules. And then we're gonna bring this back to the December regular board meeting. Where you guys will discuss any major conflicts. Um, I did my best to look at a ton of calendars. The master district calendar, the school calendar, big, big ticket district events. Um, and so hopefully I captured. Um, the best dates we can, and I also did mirror a lot of what we did this full year, so nothing is too far out there. But I took into consideration spring break and other major holidays as well. So tonight you just have to take it with you, look at calendars, and then we can really get into discussions at December's meeting.
Okay, there's no action needed tonight.
No, just for review.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions right now?
Um, I do.
Go ahead.
I noticed that we only have two budget meetings scheduled, and it was my understanding that starting in January, we were going to have budget meetings every month.
Yeah, those would be special board meetings, and that's part of our presentation tonight. So we're gonna get direction from you. Those would be in addition to these meetings.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Let me let me make one more clarification to so you're clear. The budget meetings are currently on there or the budget meeting that we need to go through as it relates to the development of the L count?
Yes, yes.
You wanted to do in addition to?
Yes.
And that is the presentation we have tonight. So we anticipate that we would add additional special board meetings to address the budget.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to staff presentations, facilities and measure LL micro workshop.
Chris goes first this time. That's the third one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, give me a moment. I'm pulling up the slides.
We want to take a break.
Yeah, they probably good.
Okay, why don't we take a break right now? I'm sorry. Sorry, Chris.
Thank you for taking.
I thought that's. Okay, we're back. We're going to restart the meeting. Okay, now we're doing the micro bond.
Yes.
The micro LL.
Facilities.
Facilities.
And measure.
My. Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you very much, President Morocco, Vice President Martin, and member of board trustees. It's my privilege to have with me this evening is Chris Dowler. And yes, this is the facilities and measure LL micro workshop. There's actually two topics that we're going to start to speak about a little bit together, which have to do with not just measure LL. And that's one of those this evening. So we're going to start off by giving just a quick overview update of our financial reports. And then not in any depth, but we will be as we move towards the closing of LL and other things, starting to revise a lot of these reports to go forward. But then we're going to head into really the part that we all love to hear, the progress of Bobbiere Elementary. Chris is going to report on that. And then we're going to get into a another topic. We're going to return to a topic. So we get board feedback and some level of consensus to talk about our athletic fields. This is something that's come before the board before, but we're in a little different space to talk about those now because the board has taken some initial steps to look at a possible additional certificate of participation. And that would be in sale next year, but you start planning for that, even though these are two approved projects. We'll go into some depth on that. And some background on it, you still have to plan them out months and months in advance. So we're going to look at all of those this evening. So starting with our financials, everything is on track. No significant changes have occurred. All regular payments are up to date on Bobbiere. We are in this process just so that way we sort of look way ahead at the closing of LL. How long it takes sometimes on large projects to close them? We're getting pretty close to that closure of the Vista High School project. Meaning all of the bills being paid and everything being double checked. At that point, we'll be able to report back on what we think is some cost savings over budget and some significant ones we can report back to the board. But that's all we have for financials that we really only put here for transparency with the public who have access to these. I'm going to turn this over to Chris Dowler, who will again have the precarious task of walking you through the slides on Bobbiere that no longer look like this because it changed so much. And trustee Morocco was out this week. I'm sure she can share her experience. So Chris, over to you.
Hi, good evening. So building A, the first slide that you see is looking at building A, that's going to be facing Bobbiere Drive. So we do have our vapor barrier windows are installed. We actually are installing some of our fiber siding on that building right now. The back half of building A is already actually stucked in. We have actually painted that. So the true color is on the backside of that building. So that is again a south. All right, in our, we wanted to give you an example of what one of our junior classrooms is starting to look like. Our casework is installed. All of our tech panels installed, whiteboards, doors, things like that. Actually, all of our mechanical and infrastructure is also installed, almost complete. Wanted to give you a sample of what some of the colors look like on that next slide. All right, in this area here, we just wanted to show you some more purple. So the B M P R of drywall is being installed right now. That purple drywall is actually mold resistant, so it does have a lot of significance. You've seen a lot of purple through this project on the outside of the building and on the inside. Again, great significance to stability of our buildings. The picture to the right is our serving area. So that's where the students will queue for their meals. And again, just windows and casework all being complete there. All right, this is building C. Again, we've completed a lot of our stucco and our color is there. We're starting to paint this week. And then this is a sample of what our steam classroom is going to look like. We will have polished concrete floors. We do have what's called a cloud ceiling. It's not truly clouds, but it does have a separation in the ceiling where you can see a little bit of the infrastructure that will get the typical panels that you'll see for a drop ceiling. All right, and then this is building D. So again, more improvement on building D. We do have our shade structure is up. We do have the roof on that, by the way. We did complete our framing on the inside of this building. It is kind of a small building, but yet important to our track and all of our restrooms and storage spaces. And the roof actually got completed this week as well. And a little bit of site work. The picture on the left is our new trash enclosure. So that also has a roof over it and CMU walls. So we're continuing to work on that. We have some gates and things like that coming. And then on the right, we see one of our bio basins is also complete. And we see a nice installation of our seat wall and some fence posts that are in for chain link fencing.
Thank you very much, Chris. Well, this will bring it back to me to open the second. Well, before we do that, are there any questions that board had about Bobbiere and the progress being made there? Again, trustee Morocco could also speak to that. She was just there this week.
Yeah, I really, I really liked that blue that is the under blue, the teal. No, no, then they put the bright blue over it and we took it away. It's like this beautiful kind of dark teal that was gorgeous. And then they they put the bright one over it. I kind of like the the color. No, no, but it's amazing. It's amazing. A lot of really good work, really coming along beautifully.
You had the CBOC on.
We did. We did have the CBOC, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Part of their task is they have to perform regular inspections of projects, and this being clearly the largest and only active one, they they go, they took a full walk, full inspection, and we talked in depth. And it was really powerful. We have two suit new CBOC members that you all approved. And one is Dr. Mendiola, who is also shares in Commonwealth. We were both, you know, parents with children with particular diagnoses. We talked about that purple board again, and that purple board, you know, is not just mold resistant. It's so important for children like my own that actually have high sensitivities to respiratory issues. It takes all of us away. So we talked a lot about those details. It was fantastic. So great stuff. This brings us to our second topic of talking through just an overview first. If you would indulge in an overview or a track and field situation at our two high schools. And then Chris is going to talk a little bit about rough orders of magnitude and where we are at with a rough order of magnitude. And then she's going to present sort of an overview of the basic options. Then it's going to come back to me to share with you about those options, some considerations you may want to think about as we look ahead to the future. And, you know, then we'll go through some general funding slides tonight. It's not the purpose to identify one funding source, but it's just it's something we do normally to talk through each of these. Everything's restricted funding, so we have clarity. One thing that working as a teacher taught me was how to move from teaching day to day to teaching in years. And understanding, you know, things over time. And then being a principal taught me to think in time periods of many years. And then as we went through things, one of the things that I've been grateful about this position is it's had to teach me how to think in decades, in decades. So forgive me that I'm going to take us back several decades. But these two fields at Vista High and R B V were installed in twenty twenty three, sorry, twenty thousand three and two thousand four. All right. Now, I know it's a really poor comparison on some of these things. But these fields have a similarity to tires. Not in their composition, but in that tires have two ways that you need to come to a time that you replace. Okay? If you drive on your tires a lot, you might have to replace your tires every year or two. Okay, I drive a lot. That's the case. But if you don't drive much, it doesn't mean that you can just hold on to your tires forever. Your tires actually have a point where the materials of them degrade to a point where you have to replace them anyway. So there's two factors when they specify a life expectancy. And the life expectancy you'll see was twenty twenty one and twenty twenty three. And one of the factors is length of time. The other is average use. Okay? Now, average use was interrupted on some of these fields because of the pandemic. All right, so we we did have some breathing room in all of this. Also, average use doesn't take into account vandalism and misuse, right? And we've we've seen instances where this happens and repairs have to happen. It doesn't mean that these fields haven't been refurbished along the way. They have along the way. All sorts of things happened to them, but this is the original main installation date. Now, we skip ahead on this timeline all the way to twenty twenty three, and that's an important date. That's an important date because it was a date of an official board sort of plan. But that's not the story of these fields. These fields actually started to be slated to be replaced in twenty nineteen before the pandemic with looks at them. Then twenty twenty occurred and everything was suspended. And then we came back to discussion in twenty twenty one. But then something happened in twenty twenty two, right about the time I arrived. And what happened was the rules of these fields changed dramatically. You could no longer just go replace the turf on top. They had to be Division Estate Architect approved, American with Disability Act compliant fields. Okay? And if you touched one part of them, you had to start to do anything. So we came to you with this notice to you after we realized that we developed a general rough estimate. And the rough estimate was that the fields were costing between about four point three to five million dollars each based upon just doing the field. The issue was, though, when you started going through and looking at things, we had two things change in that. One is as you started to explore more, this was not the bid price, keep in mind, this was just the be prepared, this is happening. The first was the fields couldn't be done alone. The tracks had to be done. Okay, and and I I know trustee Martin and Dr. Doyle and I have been out at R D V's tracks and I think, you know, many of us have been to Vista's tracks and you can see. The next is when you start looking at the tracks. New things start to come up. For example, for those from Vista, you've got ten lanes, right, on your tracks? The problem is you can't have ten lanes on a track when the gates open into them. So now the tracks have to be redesigned, right? The next issue was is we started to do the explorations where you can do them on this because you could lift things up and look things, things, and put it back down. We understood that there was immense soil erosion. So we knew this was going to become a much larger project. We we started to get that estimate. The next thing that occurred was we started to see bid prices dramatically increase. So the timeline you're seeing here is a series of timelines that rapidly evolved between two thousand three and two thousand four as we start to get bidding environments changing. All right? And we start to see that the projects will be much larger. Vista High Schools has one set of challenges. R B Vs has a second set of challenges. All right, but we did not approve the projects to move forward in bid. We had a general contractor that was approved to oversee them, but we did not have moved forward because we were looking at how might we fund this, right? Between the various items. And now that we come to a point of talking about certificate of participation for the future, now we see an option where we believe there are options here, and that's our purpose in presenting this evening. We're not suggesting these are the only needs of the district. Clearly, there are a lot of needs in the district, but what we are suggesting is not just for general use, but in order to make sure that we can keep these fields in the condition we need, not just for one sport. These fields are for all sports. They get used by the community. They get used as the area of refuge. They get used for school gatherings. There's these fields are not, I know they're oftentimes referred to as the football field, and we look at the striping that way. They're not just a football field. They are the field for the school. It's a big deal. So as we went through and looked at, we didn't stop any of the process. R B V's field was also approved during that time, even though. So both projects are currently D S A approved, all right? At this point where we are. Now that we have the C O P, we're prepared to come back and talk, but we are planning to continue to do the grooming of the field. But we're we're at end of life. Now that we consider time adjustments and use adjustments with the pandemic and other things were there. So we wanted to bring this back to you as being an important topic to to look at. What I would like to invite Chris to do is to really share, you know, this idea of what is a rough order of magnitude and then to give us, you know, sort of an overview of how when we look at facilities, we generally present options. And then he'll turn backward to me to to just walk us through, you know, why we think we should be looking to the future on this. And what might a timeline look like for doing it with a C O P? So Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, yes, the R the ROM or the rough order of magnitude is typically developed very early in project planning. Right? So once we get started on our conceptual schematic and design elements and stages, that estimate can vary significantly. Once the plans are completed and we do achieve approval by D S A, the true cost gets determined through a competitive bidding process. Once that is also complete, those final bids are received, and that helps us create that guaranteed maximum price or the G M P.
So as we look at, again, these are not bids. This is now where we can't give you a G M P, a guaranteed maximum price because we haven't bid it. So legally, we can't use those terms. We can only legally use the term ROM. And and the key to the ROM is the first word, rough. It it's not a fine. We would know more when we get into the bidding environment. But really, we when we look at this is if we're looking at these fields, there are really three fundamental options as as we see it in order to address this. The first would be option one is, you know, we just remain pause. Now, we continue all of the maintenance that we can do and the simple repairs, the deep grooming, those things. And we move forward and we we conduct some fuel compression tests. These are known as G max tests. Here's the challenge of a G max test, as I understand. You typically conduct G max testing on fields that you just complete as a means of inspection. Okay, and we do this all the time. Let's let's not talk about fields. When we are building a building, we, before we seal up the walls, we test for mold all the time. We test for electrical wiring and other things. Once you seal it, you don't go back in and constantly test it. And that's because the G max testing that we do when we complete these projects typically, or at the end of a major restoration. What we're doing is checking for consistency across the field because something's happened to it. And and they can't test every square foot of it. It's cost prohibitive. These tests are like ten thousand dollars, right?
I just want to stop real quick. Student board members, it's eight o'clock. You are free to leave. We will, if you care to stay, you're more than welcome to stay. Love to hear your input on this if you if you can and if you're still inclined. Thank you.
Thank you. So if we're doing G max testing, we may find if we're doing regular testing and get about ten thousand dollars for standard G max test, which just tests a few areas. It can be possible that one side of the field passed the G max. It doesn't mean that the other side won't. It it's not a representational sample because the fields degraded over twenty years. And I think we we can comprehend that pretty clearly. But we could wait till G max testing to bring you back information and and do it at that point and then start to make decisions. But really, if we're going to replace these two fields, they're both similar in age, similar conditions at this juncture, both of them. There's what two ways to approach it. One option would be what we talked about originally, which was option two, which was at the time of the year we were in and the condition fields of the fields had varied slightly at that point. We've gone a few more years. The conditions are looking pretty much the same. The original option was go with Vista High School first. The ROM is about ten point eight million, and then you move over to R B V, which is seven point three. The second option reverses this. Now, there's different considerations to make on all this, but there there's, when we look at it, there's a rationale for why option three may make the most sense. And one of the rationales is is that as a smaller scope project, we may be able to get this in order if we started to proceed on it before the next football season. Now, what that would mean is as the school came back into session, both teams would move to that field to play, which would then be fully restored. And then we would start on the other field through that year. If that makes sense. So when we look at the three options in scope and sequencing, if we look for how we would do it based upon the time of year we're at, we may be able to proceed in a fashion that would allow for us to get R B Vs done before the start of new school year, which then would allow the teams to shift over there. And then we would have Vista High immediately proceed. Now, you leave Vista High's open for practicing and for conducting items until the other field gets a guaranteed open date. So that way you always have, because we only have two fields. In a large school district, we would disperse the teams around, right? And and we would have other options. Now, there are other considerations in here that are a little different than before. Before, when we had this conversation, we were moving major athletic clubs like the Vista Storm and other things off of. We've come to agreements with them already. Because we know we're going to go through long periods of time where we have to look at the use of ball fields across the city. Because we need to be able to do things. There are certain schools and athletics, for example, lacrosse and girls' activities, you can only play them on turf by C I F regulation. So in order to do that, the Vista Storm had been partnering with us because they had those fields. So we needed to move them off those fields onto our grass fields on different locations in the district, so that way our girls' team would have access. So we do have the infrastructure capacity now and capability to do this. So those are the options that the board may want to consider as the sequencing options. Now, the final thing I'll just quickly run through is what are the funding options? And generally, we just present.
Can I offer a fourth option?
Yep.
Option four would be kind of the reverse of how it was when R B V was built. For ten years, they had to share the field over at Vista High. And so because of finances, and I know you're going to talk about funding in a minute, but because of this cost we're looking at, well, very close to seventeen, eighteen million dollars for two football fields and tracks. Could we just do R B V until we're in a more stable position?
Well, I think that's an excellent question. And the answer to that would be I've worked in school districts that have multiple high schools and had one. My recommendation is something I can't speak to right now is you would go to the stadium that had the largest capacity. I don't know that to be R B V or Vista High. I do know, you know, but I have worked in those environments. I don't know that to be so off the top of my head, and I I'm not going to be able to give you an estimate. But yes, you can, but it does create a series of environments. The district I was in that had one stadium also ended up renting the community college stadiums because there's so many overlapping sports that occur. And that district eventually found that it was far more expensive over time. It did save money upfront, though. That is accurate.
May I interrupt also? I know you're about to talk about funding. I I'm going back to the Piston Magnet. They have a football field there. And we have a city council that might be willing to throw funds towards that. Just putting it out there.
All right. So generally, for funding options, there are five different things within facilities that we are looking at. We're looking at our existing fund forty, which we would require. We don't have enough sitting there right now. But that is one that we have been looking at. The option two is the thought of using L L funds that might remain from other things. There are two issues that come along with that. The first is when we originally consulted a bond attorney about this, they informed us that L L funds would not be in applicable use because it was not within the bond language. Okay? So we did consult on that. The second is the the timing of it. Bobbiere won't be completed and all of the items really cashed out for some time. Option C would be to identify fewer funds from the future certificate of participation that you're currently pursuing. So Jen is in motion on that and we'll bring that back in December, January, right? The next is one we talked about before. So we put it on the books, which is if you have a future bond, you do the same ninety day replenishment. Now, it wouldn't be permitted that anything before those ninety days be replenished back to the C O P. But if you do choose to do it, typically, that's something that boards do is you do that ninety day retroactive resolution allows for you to replenish your C O P. Generally, on any of these projects, when you can't use a bond, we do recommend a mixed use of some kind. That way you're able to look at your timing and all of the effort for things. So that's why we always put up the the funding slide for you. But I think that really concludes it. And it's out, you know, just for your consideration as a board in any any direction you want to hear.
Thank you. I would like to turn to our student board members who have been waiting and because I really want to. This is something that impacts you guys. Do you have any questions, first of all?
I get more clarification on what it would be like sharing the fields. Everyone's in move forward in that direction.
Sure. So sharing fields, exactly what it sounds like. Let let's so that way we don't create any sort of crosstown rivalry. All right, let's just call it school A and school B. Okay? If school A held the stadium, okay? School B and school A, when school A was away on an away game, school B would have to come in and play in that stadium. They'd play on the home side. Everything would typically be marquee not on any school. It would be marquee to a district generally because you don't want to identify with one school or another. So it becomes a scheduling issue. And, you know, again, the districts where I've worked, where they do this. It becomes a scheduling issue. And you know, again, the districts where I've worked, where they do this. Um, that was before even we had girl flag football and all sorts of additional sports on it. So it's really scheduling. The next part is. Um, both schools have to figure out a way to practice offsite. Because there isn't enough space for practice. All right. And generally, both schools, they work through schedules and if they can't come to mutual agreements. They both have to schedule offsite because you can't put one school at a competitive advantage on up over the other on athletics. They both have to have full access. So that's what it looks like. It is extraordinarily complex. Uh, but it has occurred, and I want to be clear that it has occurred, but it is extraordinarily complex. The other side is um. Making sure that school B in this case. That whatever is happening on their field, that it's still not a tripping housing or another housing uh problem because they cannot necessarily continue to conduct. Physical education. You see, because when we look at these fields, we talk about P E a lot. The school district I'm talking about had one athletic stadium, but it had a P E facility. Including the tracks and the other items that could be played. They just didn't have seating. At that location. So in this case. We would still be left on school B with the conundrum of what do we do about the field? Because that's used in physical education, not just athletics. What do we do about the track? It is in the curriculum that the students have to run their mind. They have to conduct certain sets, right? So it 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 becomes. It, for lack of a better word, a a scheduling nightmare would be correct.
Yeah, that that is exactly what concerned me. If I go off the top of my mind, I don't know. Marching band is out there every game until nine thirty.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Boys' football, girls' football, hockey. Cross country, track, it numerous things going on.
As a former music instructor of high school, I thank you for bringing marching bands. It is a big deal. Yeah, they do.
Anyone else have a question?
Um, scheduling, I think, will definitely be like a really big thing because even for like winter sports, like. Girl soccer, like boys soccer, they have different scheduling even now. So like having to schedule that and then it's country, like. All of those like that require a track and like I want to make this like emphasize like. Hopefully that there is more like, this isn't trying to get a one, a new one, because I know that like injury is very prone for. These tend and since they have it different places, like a lot of the turns, like I know some football. Players got like a lot of like turf burns this year because of like how. Like overuse.
Thank you, members Sanchez. I think those are all incredible points we take out of. We appreciate you for bringing that.
I would like to add, I have some notes here on things that I'm that I've noticed on our field. I run both cross country and track, so I I've been out there. Uh, the track floods very, very easily. If there's any small amount of rain, then puddles everywhere and that causes a lot of problems during practice and especially during competition. Uh, the track is very worn. From what I understand. The runner runs on the track and it's supposed to return a certain amount of force and it allows the runner to keep going. When it's worn. Uh, the runner is very prone to injury because you're repeatedly pounding on on the ground and that can. I can cause a lot of issues, obviously. Um, it's peeling in certain areas and it's more prone to vandalism. And I know it's a very expensive thing. I know that's. Quite scary right now, as especially with us discussing the. Financial state of things, but I think these are very important considerations because there's a lot of people using the track and it's a lot of people going to the field. Same thing as uh trustee Sanchez said, there's a lot of track or turf burns going on. And I understand there's a, I think there's a metal plate under. The actual turf. And people will, especially the marching band, they're out there for long periods of time and it's. Raises issues of overheating or. Other really concerns. So that's just what I want to share regarding the state of the track.
Thank you, member man Rob. Our architect is here and he's nodding his head. So.
Well, um, what about I am trustee Morocco for that, um. The Vista Magnet middle that has a football field and and a track. Would it be possible for the high schools to use that for practice?
That is actually part of the rotation plan when they have to share. A short term. So I want to be clear that we we were impressed. With both principals' capability to collaborate along with their athletic directors, both athletic directors sat down. They came up with a temporary schedule. It involved using at the time Vista Magnet Middle School for practices. Using uh the the now uh. Vita campus, so new Vita's campus at the time was was something that was considered old Vita's would be considered now. Lots of things were considered.
Right. I was gonna, I was gonna suggest about old old Vita's campus if there's, there would be uh that could be utilized as well.
We've, every field was being utilized in order to create space because again, we oftentimes speak about this in terms of the football program and and. Um. It it's way bigger than that. I I will share with you one of the big conflicts I had. I revealed, you know, I did teach music for a while. I, we went toe to toe, Mike Hastings and I, back in the day, toe to toe, because for marching band, we needed equal access to the fields. It 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 is all of those sports. It is. Soccer time. It is boys and girls sports. It's lacrosse. It's all of them. So the temporary solutions are very difficult, but every field was being utilized in that.
Okay. And then I have one more question uh on the cost per student um that's listed on on page eleven. Thank you for providing that. Um, you are. Going off of ADA, but is that weighted to uh account for the declining student enrollment over that time?
Do you want Anna to explain how she came up with that number?
Yeah, well, I had Anna come up. I was not part of the calculation, but I I would also bring.
No, it's it's.
She had, she had her theory.
Yeah, it's it's weighted.
And what we did is we took an average of the last nine years of um the ADA, the school sites, and we divided by the number. The cost and the number of um, yeah, the variable ADA. So it's an average. It's.
Right, but the projection is that.
Is that it's going to be over.
Thousand by twenty thirty one, so.
We would reset. We did not project into the future, but that would absolutely result into a higher cost, but should.
Yes, yes. So that's, that's. That'd be good. Consider, okay. Anybody else have questions or comments? Go ahead.
So even if we use the V M S field as a rotation. There's still an impact like other sporting events that they may currently have that would be impacted because that would not be able to correct.
Can you share a little bit more? I want to answer.
I mean, like, you know, that sounds like a soccer or there or like the Little League is like, you know. To practice.
Sure.
Another field to become like a.
So. So I, I don't want to go in into so far down. I'd I'd be happy to write about this sort of eth lane. This became one of the most complex scheduling things that I had worked with. So let me walk you through just a few examples. Pop Warner has to move off of V M S and Vista Magnet Middle School's field and needs to go over to Mission Vista High School for a duration of eighteen months. We've worked through that. I had to clear six fields in the city that are turf fields. Across the district in order for the lacrosse games to be able to move off of the fields to have enough room.
The city worked really well with it.
Yeah, the city worked with it. Then we had to develop the after school bussing schedule to bus kids around to figure out how we would get them for practices to one location to another. It wasn't just Vista Magnet Middle. We also were looking at the time at the old Ranch of Minerva site, Clayland, New Vita site to utilize those fields on specific hours. And then we had to do everything from adjusting how gate fees would be collected and redistributed. To a weighted adjustment on how it would impact the attendance of games. Because clearly, when school, again, not to create crosstown rivalry, when school B goes to school A, the population of school B can't just have access to it. So now we're having to provide transportation for parents. They'd get to the other school across town, but that limits gate fees. So how do you cost adjust back? And that's just a few quick examples. It it. It was a monster of a task.
The other thing that we haven't even talked about is lighting.
Lighting was a big deal. We were gonna have to put lighting so they could practice.
Building doesn't have lighting.
Yeah. There's a lot.
Right.
The other, uh, going with option one, does that open us up to like any lawsuits? Because we don't.
It wouldn't be lawsuits. It would be C I F. Walk him through C I F.
Uh, well, there's several things here and I I would advise that if we're interested in talking about a legal matter, we can consult an attorney to speak to that. Uh, but for C I F. We're we're getting to a point where we have been put on notice on several of our facilities, frankly. Um, we have gyms that have worn. To a point where there's nothing left to sand on the floor. There's just some cement showing. These are fields uh that in this case are getting to the point where they're not meeting C I F requirements. We now know that even though there uh you can simply say, don't use lane ten. I'm sorry, I'm not a track runner, but I'm I'm assuming I'm counting from the inside out, but I presume that's correct. But lane ten, you can say you're not actually supposed to use that at all. Because the gates are open into it. So we're we are. Getting to a point where we're at risk that our athletics simply can't be run for a competitive C I F event. Being there. That is an accurate statement.
And it's there correlation with like the length of the field with student injuries that. Just the item spoke about.
The length of the field?
The length of years that we know we have it now and like, at the earliest, like, are we seeing more student injuries today? Because of the field conditions than we were like fifteen years ago or ten years ago?
Thank you. We can take a look at that. I I I won't speak to specifics as to any sort of thing that's there. What we can speak to. Is is that field conditions. They're they're twofold, above ground and below ground. All right. Now, when it's a grass field, you feel um and you see the divots immediately. When it's one of the synthetic field that happens, erosion happens underneath and then it sort of slowly collapses. You don't quite see it. What we do know is that over time. Any field's G max rating. All right, G max is a compression rating, similar to what this young man was talking about of how fields resilience and springback. Will go down over time. And we know that the more that fields erode, the more holes you will have. And clearly, with more holes and more items. You will see more possibilities of entry. It's not a guaranteed, but more possibilities of. Got it.
Well, I I think this was a question um regarding Vista High's football team. I was speaking to one of the V Ps and they said that they had. A couple of other injuries this past season with with their players and a lot of them were. Hurt. So I was just wondering if there's only any correlation because of life expectancy is twenty twenty one there at that field.
Sure. Um, we will continue to take a look at that and get back to you. As a statistician, we always say correlation does not mean causation, right? But uh we'll have to do more investigation into that. But I, we've heard from our coaches. I want to be specific because I trust their coaching.
Not just football.
Not just football, across the board. That they are not feeling good on these. They don't feel safe and secure. That is input that I value. We've heard from students about this. So I, you know, they've given great examples themselves of what they're seeing. But we've heard from the student body. We've heard from our coaches that are doing the frontline work about this. And and we can say they. They have concerns that they're voiced.
Okay, so what do you need from us? The next steps or what? What is it that you need from us?
I I think for, in order for us to move forward, we need some indications of whether you you would be entertaining. Um, a thought of replacing a field um before next fall. The reason that's important is because we would need to get moving on it in order to to make that happen. If not, then we would likely go forward with. Doing option A, which is reconditioning the field in place and retesting it. There's always the 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 possibility as we go through that, that it may not test out for C I F. So this is a difficult situation right now. We're kind of in a dilemma.
Okay. Thoughts? I am concerned about the funding. Um. That's, that's, that's a big concern. You know, you you guys have put the fear of godness about. Future, what's going on? Uh, with our, our uh. Our our budget going forward. Um, a C O P is, I get that we will incur that we have to pay back, right?
Well, a C O P is based upon funds you're already giving. And there are two ways that you can receive those funds. One is is on an annual basis in small increments. The other is to engage in that C O P. And the funds pay them back. So, yeah, I think you understand this probably better than most people have worked with trustee Morocco because of of your family's history in construction. The theory is that the interest rate on the C O P is less than the escalation rate on the construction. That is the theory. So if you get the C O P that you would actually be able to do the work now and save the money compared to waiting of getting the annual payment. But it is money that is guaranteed by the state. So the C O P, um, which at this point you haven't voted on. But is proceeding with all of the studies because that has been approved. Would come back to you in December. And if you approve moving forward with the C O P, that would go to sale in February. And then the funds would become available after that.
It is important though to differentiate from a financial perspective. It is true that we're declining enrollment school district and we are um, we're coming close to expanding all of the COVID additional funds. This funding is a different restricted funding source. It's not the same as um passing our general fund budget. Just keep that in mind. C O Ps. That that funding is for the particular purpose of facility improvements.
Yeah.
I'm still, I'm still unclear as to how that money gets paid back. It's a loan. It's a right.
Well, correct, but we get something called R D A, re redevelopment fund pass through. And based upon a settlement with the state of California, we are paid that, not based on our ADA, but as a region. Okay? So we're, we're paid that back. It's based upon valuations of property. So that's how we're getting that. There is a time limit to it. That's what the C O Ps correspond to. Is a time where that funding is guaranteed.
Okay, so the funding is guaranteed. What are we using that funding for right now?
We have already sold the C O P. So we did one certificate of participation. Uh, several years ago to fund Fund Forty. That went into that account. And what happened is is over time, because of the value of properties in the district, the amount that the state owed us was more. And based upon the amount more they owe us, we have been able to come back to you and say you have a very little to no risk situation. That you can sell a second C O P. And proceed with this construction and that those funds will be used to pay it back.
You're just front loading the funds, but I want to answer your question. So for the current C O P. We've done, and we can get to the exact list of it. We've done approximately forty three different projects. With the current C O P and almost all of them were infrastructure type projects. Roofing, plumbing.
Um, Jack's paving was.
Yeah, paving, those examples. And we have a list, exactly what we spent that C O P on.
Okay.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah. And then that, so then is that almost paid? Then that C O P is that almost paid off then or?
I think we have another ten years of paying that. It's for the, the way the C O P, the certificates of participation are designed. Is the payoff rate is aligned with the timeline of the funding. Uh, so that amount was aligned. So the the final day of that funding source coincides with the payment of the first one. Yes.
Okay, and so, um. Go ahead, good.
So with the C O P. Um, can you tell me approximately how much the interest rate would be on the new one?
I can't till we go to market. Um, we wouldn't have an idea. They, I think Jen estimated the interest rate at four percent, somewhere in that nature on this last presentation. I wasn't impressed.
Okay. What happens if our property values go down? What happens if there's like something happens in state of California property values?
That's a great question. Um, and we can put this back in the Friday letter. And uh we were trying to explain this when Jen proposed. We actually carry insurance as part of that to make sure that we don't ever impact the general fund under district. So we we carry an insurance policy along with that in case something happens. It it would cover that in the same way that uh when we do construction, it's bonded in case something happens. The insurance company covers that amount. So that's why we bond each of those certificate of participations in case of such an unlikelihood, but we always want to be safe.
So based on what you just said, this should not negatively impact our general fund.
No, and the C O P has nothing to do with it. General fund is fund one.
It's totally different funding.
Totally different. It's Fund Forty is where the C O P would go to fund. It's held in a different funding account.
The county wouldn't even allow us to do it. Probably separate funding sources.
Anyone else? Okay, I have comments, but not.
Go ahead.
Um, when I think about uh. The impact that the fields have for our community, not just the football. But the band, um, the girls' sports, which have really. Become um almost, I think we have record numbers of girls participating in sports now. And the availability of the community to use those those fields. I think it impacts. A quality of life that that. Our students need. Especially um adolescent students to to be out and and doing something physical in a safe manner. So um I think the investment. Is. Is worth it. Our 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 students and their families are worth it. And I would probably. Lean on option C because um option A like. Lean on option C because um option A like touching money that's allocated for fire alarms, that's safety. Right? That's money that hasn't been utilized yet. Is that correct? Option A?
Yeah, option A or the um with with the current COP, we have already designated the final amounts of money for those projects in parentheses.
Right, so I wouldn't want option A because of that. Um. Option D is also a good choice because you could say, oh, we're gonna take a bond to to the community. And if it passes, it gets re replaced, right?
Yeah, that's that would be a big if, right?
So yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Um options C or D.
To to be clear about the funding then, engaging in option C does not preclude you from engaging in option D.
To do.
Down the road, right? Option, because you have to, I I think of money in terms of cash flow. Cash flow is the number one issue we have, not. Not so, but it's how the money comes in. We need to start doing things and the COP funds can be used for those right now. If you choose to go for a bond, it would be retroactive. You would reimburse. You would be going back to it. So it it's not.
Be like a transition.
Yeah, it's you can choose C and then later, if you choose to go for a bond, then you choose to write in the amendment of the bond called the ninety day provision. That allows for you to reimburse. You can also choose not to do that, right? But the the COP funds are the most flexible. When you're in a bond, you can only do bond projects that are listed.
If we were to go forward with this and as soon as the a bond could pass, it'd be next November, the funds wouldn't come until. But January, February. So how is does the ninety days work?
It's nine ninety days from the point that you voted to put the uh measure on the on the ballot. Yeah, so it's not from when you receive the funds.
But we're not doing that now.
I understand. So let me give an example of timing on it. Let let's say you decided to align the ninety days. To let's say November sixth of next year, okay? Three months before that is the date. Any dollars spent after that can be charged back to the bond. That's that's what we're saying. That's what that option D is. Usually you can charge it back.
Any any before the ninety days?
No, any within that ninety day window can be charged back to the bond, even though you didn't have it. It can be charged retroactively back to the bond. So what you would do is you would then, if you do that. You would say, and I think the next question is, why would you do that? You would say, for example, if project, let's let's give this scenario uh trustee Alvarado put forward. Let's say you chose to do RBV first, right? About seven point five million dollars, somewhere in there. You're starting that project. You get to July one, okay? You're not starting to pay for RBVs, the second construction Vista High until about September. Everything within that Vista High one, all the expenses, the cash may be coming out of Fund Forty. But if you did pass the bond, then in the accounting, you would transfer the expense out of the COP to the bond. That's legal. Why would you do that? Is because COP funds can be used. For more flexible maintenance issues and other items, the more flexible.
So you're saying that it's contingent on the day we vote on the bond?
Yeah.
And you say we would vote in November of next year?
No, the voters vote in November of next year. Yes.
So when will the board be voting on?
You would need to vote by July, third week of July, summer twenty twenty six.
And that's very normal school districts. This is typical.
And that starts the clock.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So again, I'm, what do you need from us again? Sorry.
We're try, this is a very important conversation. I'm glad that we're taking the time to deliberate on it. Um but what we're asking for you is that we have two fields that are nearing end of life. We need some direction from you. We asked a year ago, this conversation, the fields are not getting any newer. And we have to make some decisions about what to do. What you have before you is an option that says, let's just not make a decision today. For which we would then go forward in the during the winter break, which is only a month out. And recondition the current fields that we have and then go through the testing process. At some point, the testing process is going to come out negative and we may have an impact as relates to CIF. And the CIF may not allow us to use the fields. We don't know exactly when that's going to happen, but it's our obligation to let you know this. If we're in an instance where the the field is longer able to be used for CIF, that's a pretty significant impact to the programs at our high schools. And so that's one. Uh the the other options are for us to move forward with the replacement of the field. We're recommending Rancho Buena Vista. The reason we're recommending it now is it will be a faster project. It has fewer, at least fewer known problems. Than Vista High. Vista has more irrigation problems and water drain off problems. That's why it's more expensive. That's the that's the issue we have in front of you today. The other reason we wanted to bring it up is we are in the middle of the exploration of a COP. For which Jen will bring back and answer trustee Martin's question about what percentage rate are we paying for it and these other things. He will have that for you shortly in the next month or so. And so you can make an informed decision about that. So tonight, you're not voting on anything. You're giving us directions so we could theoretically prepare for you to vote on something as it relates to the field in the near future. In order for us to move on a board decision, we need a long runway. So today, you're simply giving us directions so we can prepare a runway.
So it's a replacement options, it's like.
Yes.
So with uh if we were to go with option C, we're not locking us into a.
You have not made a, you will not make a decision tonight. You're simply giving us direction to prepare for that.
To prepare.
Yeah.
So you know, I think the options are option, it's on page eleven, options one, two.
I have it up. I agree. Let me let me bring it up.
Wait a minute, no, no, no. I think the page before that.
No, no.
Yes, that's. No, this got it right there. That's that's pages.
The so.
Right now, whether we want to do fake option one, two, the question is whether we want to do option one, two or three. Okay.
Three for me.
Three for me too. Three.
Three. Oh, it'll be three. But I I can I just have a quick question? Um I don't recall how much uh money we were talking about from a COP. Is that?
Uh we were looking at twenty five, twenty six million dollars. They're gonna run all of the figures. Um we did ask them to go with a very conservative figure for the board. And also to make it fully insurable for the reasons that trustee Morocco brought up, to make sure that it could not impact the general fund in any way. If there was uh a recession in the market that had been not seen before, we always plan for this.
What about if we pull up these fields and there's another change order? For thirty percent and it exceeds that twenty five, twenty six million dollars?
Close the program.
All all we can do is move, oh, we have a, we have an architect here. I mean, Josh, come up and.
Nation, right?
How do you do this for a living? But perhaps, Josh, you can get, I think it's a totally legitimate question. And I'm, even though we're we're joking a little bit, I think trustee Martin makes a good point. She's made a good point all night long. What about these change orders? How can we avoid them?
Before Josh speaks, for those that don't know, Josh Echol, he is essentially the equivalent of our district architect. He knows this art, this uh space pet. Uh desk. Neither Josh nor I are superstitious, but we hope you didn't jinx it.
Thank you, everybody. If you could please repeat the question.
I knocked, we'd be out by eight thirty tonight, so.
Well, oh.
I I can talk quick, but not.
What happens if we lift it up and there's a bunch of unforeseen?
Change orders basically.
It happens on every project like we talked about. Um in particular, on campuses all across your district because of the age of the campuses. Um we do the best that we can to investigate subsurface conditions. We utility locate, we pothole, we dig, we try and find everything we can. Some things you can't find. You can't locate plastic pipe with a metal detector. It doesn't happen. So we find things that we don't intend to find. Um I will tell you, um I think it was discussed earlier at Vista High, there will be things we find that we did not intend. I in full transparency, I I will tell you that's gonna happen. It happens on all the projects. Um RBV is a newer campus. We have a little more information. Uh we know some of the things that are out there. Um but we will probably still find things that are unintended. Uh to protect against those, we use things like contingencies and allowances. Um that that helps us to try and figure out and and kind of safeguard against some of that, but we can't predict it all, unfortunately.
Sorry. We we do typically budget on these, what we call a ten percent contingency. That's the legal maximum. We shifted that practice when I arrived and it was endorsed by the board. But Mr. Eckles is correct. When you pull it up, you, there's lots of things you can you can find. Uh we do believe that in the case of the amount that you're looking at. That the COP would be enough to deal with most of those unforeseen. We can't guarantee it. Um but we do believe that that is the case uh that's there. So we would be talking about all that throughout. There are other things and it really, it pertains to the last presentation this evening, the complexity of budgeting. Is there's different things with budgets that just are really hard in California. And we'll we'll, I think, you know, Vince is gonna illustrate why it's probably wise to engage in some workshops. One is, we we still are awaiting funds and other things coming from the state that we're owed. There's a lot in play. So we're feeling confident about two fields. Now, we're not, there's other things we're not feeling confident about beyond that. We know that are out there. There are lots of needs in the district.
I almost think it's more more to make sure that we have functioning toilets at Vapa. If we're gonna get this money, I mean, that that uh and one of this, one of Vista has its own stuff too. The Vapa's plumbing system is about to collapse, so. It's it's hard.
Interesting.
So tonight, we're simply asking, you're again, you're not making a decision. You're just giving us direction to begin to develop a runway. So that you can um push forward in the event that you choose later to.
And that has taken place, so we can.
Ready to go.
Correct.
C, sounds like C is the one you're wanting.
C is is a funding option. We don't know how we're gonna get it.
Well, that will be later. All right, sounds good.
Good one, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, demographer's report.
All right.
Wow, I get a lot of patience.
Get to give you a lot of, not the best news this evening. Um we um. We do have our demographer this evening. Thank you for joining us. Anna is gonna be introducing our demographer. Uh here in a moment. Uh I'm just gonna give you a quick overview and I. As we get into this, I'm gonna say my thank you to Anna and Vince right for the next presentation, but Anna helped prepare all this. Uh we do have a few things upfront. You do have a correction piece of paper. The correction is in there. In order to correct some items, so you have accurate information. So thank you that your corrections with you. Um the corrected slide is on slide fifteen. Uh that will come up. The report is accurate. Um it is a correction within there and again, slide fifteen is uh the corrected one. And you will see and you'll know the difference because it says revised on eleven, five, twenty five. And it switches a uh twenty five to a thirty five and a twenty four to a thirty four, okay? Which is not the direction you generally want to head, but that is the accurate information. We have asked.
Official report is accurate.
Official report is accurate. We have asked our demographer to come out and Anna will uh do this. And I know. That, you know, the trustees have accurately pointed out, we are looking at some funding things that pertain to ADA. My takeaway when I read through this report the first time, and I want to thank everybody at MGT who what they did to provide this. Is that California is a changing environment. Over eighty percent of school districts are experiencing declining enrollment. The school district that that helped bring me back into public education and may be a teacher here in California. Used to have a hundred and thirty one thousand kids and now it's ninety two. Right? This is a phenomenon being seen all over the place. My big takeaway from this report is twofold. If the peak of Vista Unified School District was in the early two thousands. By the time we're done with the deep line, we'll be at half of where we were at RP. That's my takeaway message. I I I, not to go step by step, they'll take you through that. But my takeaway message is that's the reality on the ground. It has to do with the historic law of birth rate. And we can talk about other things that may be economic factors and other things that are there, but that's the reality on the ground. The next is how incredibly complicated their job is. Keep in mind, when they started doing this, there was no such thing as transitional kindergarten and now there is that that plays in. And it's hard to make all those calculations in here because this is, it is a data science and they're doing their best based upon projections. So we've asked uh for this presentation to be abbreviated, we gave you the full report. But the big takeaway message from peak to to bottoming out, we look like it will be at half. And that means a reduction of an additional about three thousand plus students over where we are today by twenty thirty one. And that's what we're having with the nation. So I thank the board president, vice president, board trustees for indulging it. Because Anna works so hard with the team. Uh we'll turn it over uh to you to introduce our democrats. Good to see you.
Thank you, board. Um sorry, thank you, board president, board members. Thank you so much. Uh so just recently, we got the information. We have tonight here with us David Kite from MGT. He prepared the the full report. We did ask him that the presentation be not too lengthy. But with enough information that can provide you the necessary observations. And guide you to what we are foreseeing for the next uh future, well, with this, like, thank you.
Uh good evening. Good to see some of you again. Some of you maybe knew since I would think it was about a year or two ago I was here. Um yes, we do an annual update for your forecast. This is reporting essentially a late presentation from last year. Updating your data as we speak. So it'll be a new version of this in the next few months. And somewhere down the line, we'll we'll be updating these numbers as well. Am I the one that's moving it or? All right, thank you. So just to give a update again, we do every year is we we refresh everything. We visit or research your residential development, what's going on, if there's anything new with the city or the county. We collect your student data each year, representing roughly about every early October. We map the data, we know where the kids live, we do our analysis, updating the factors that I'll cover in a moment. And then we roll a forecast out uh typically over seven years. We look at last four years and we will trends and we roll those out the next seven. Uh this is our methodology. Walk you through to these in a little bit. Three pronged uh approach with the birth factors. Those help us look at. Uh estimating future kindergartners and now transitional kindergartners. Um the mobility in the middle is we look here, I mentioned your last four years of data. Look at what's happening in your built out portions of your district, which is the majority of your district. It's a modified cohort method. See those numbers and what's happening in your established neighborhoods. And lastly, as I mentioned, we look at your development. We apply what we call student yield factors. Also known as student generation rates to estimate each year how many students will be coming in from new housing. Little hard to read up there, but this is more of an example of what's in the report. We uh do sets of essentially three, what we call tenants matrices. This is one for elementary schools. We have one for your middle and your high schools. Essentially, when you read down these columns, it tells you the numbers you're familiar with. That's your enrollment at each of your schools. The layer that we add is again the mapping part. We across, that tells you the students are living each of your zones. And then you can see the cells of kids that are coming in from certain parts within your district. Uh transferring at the bottom, you can see the students who are coming in from outside your district. And the numbers going to each school and so on. So that and then you have at the far right. Your non-boundary schools, you can see the areas they're pulling their students from in your district. And again, we have this for each of your your levels as well. Let's just go through the factors real quickly here. I mentioned the birth data. Uh kind of light blue line across, that's what we call our base here. This was a year ago's data. So two thousand twenty four's kindergartners roughly born five years earlier, two thousand nineteen. We have birth data uh available at the zip code level. Those are your predominant zip codes you see listed there. We take the totals. And then we show usually five years before. We don't use those in the study, but they're there for reference. So you can kind of see where the birth, they've been dropping, continuing to drop. And then we kind of come up with a percentage where you're gonna either go up or down or smaller or larger. Uh future kindergarten class sizes. In this particular case, it actually shows a little uptick. In the first couple of years in the kindergarten compared to what last year's kindergarten was, but we're only talking about a couple percent. And then you can see it's kind of dropping below that hundred percent, but not too much. So it's kind of leveling off, I guess you could say. I can't tell you what's gonna happen. too much. So it's kind of leveling off, I guess you could say. I can't tell you what's going to happen beyond a certain number of years, but we kind of average it there. And it's not as maybe as dramatic of a drop as it was the previous five years. Trying to put as positive spin on there as I can on there. Um, this is just another way of looking at it. It's the, the, the overall ones in the zip codes to the blue, the darker blue to really what's there in your kindergarten five years later, the other colored areas. And you can see at the top, it kind of gives you what we call the capture rates. So really, based on that information of the students that were there five years earlier, you're more or less getting thirty-five to forty-five percent range of what was born in your zip codes five years later. They, I can't tell you where they're going, if they left, if they're going to a uh charter school or or private, but that's the true historic numbers there. Again, not expecting to read this, but the colors will help. This is those mobility factors. Now, these really are what's driving your decline. And let me explain this. We look at four years of data. So remember, this was October twenty-four. And we have twenty-three, twenty-two and twenty-one years. We pair up the years. We look at the kindergartners, let's say in two thousand twenty-one and the first graders in two thousand twenty-two in certain areas. Data go up, down, um, stable. Stable, I think it shows up as uh white. Blue is your gained kids. Yellow means you're losing kids from one year to the next. So we do four years of data and three years of change. And we average it. So those are really what's driving your decline. I'll show it and I'll prove it kind of in our forecast. Again, can't tell you where they're going. They were there last year. There's less of them the next year. And these are the, the biggest factor is most of your district is built out. There's not a heck of a lot of development going on. So it's, these are established neighborhoods and what trends are continuing. And we break them down by your elementary zones. So small, large enough areas, but small enough areas. But you can see for the most part, no matter where you look at, there is about probably eighty percent um their, your zones are losing kids from one grade to the next. And this is where we tie in that last part. Those yield factors on the right, those are numbers that gets multiplied by the future housing units. And how you interpret it, if you look at the S F D there, single-family detached, typical single-family homes. A K five factor of point one six three means if you build a hundred single-family homes, that would generate essentially sixteen K five students. Eight, six, eight students and about eleven, nine, twelve students. That's what's coming out. If you even had that much, you don't have that much going on. But you can see these are fairly low rates on top of it. Plus, the next slide will show you from the report, there's there's really, there's some infill and there's some projects going on, but nothing large. Um, but we have the list there, the projects we've identified. Applying those rates and when they're going to be built, those students get folded into our forecast. So let's get into the forecast. This is what shows up as one page in the report. I've broken up into two slides. This is the upper part of the, what I call the district-wide forecast. Those first four columns are real numbers. Those are your TK through twelve numbers. Um, and you'll see that blue line, everything to the right of that blue line, that's your seven years of forecasting. And everything was based again off of last October's data. But you can kind of see that shading we have in the green. Really what that's kind of telling you in analysis is that as of a few years ago, and you look at those numbers, kind of a little hidden there, you had larger grade classes in the younger grades. They weren't huge, but they were larger than they are now. And you can see that they've been dropping. TK has been going up. And this is their first year, it's a full grade. But you're never going to get TK to equal what your kindergarten and kindergarten will never be what your first grade is. It's just the nature of the beast there. But when you actually can hit one more. Yeah, sorry, go back. I'm sorry, I guess there was a, in here, there was a a line here, but a squiggly line, it's not showing up on here. But where we say the impact of the mobility factors, if you just, you can do this yourself. You pick a grade that two thousand twenty-four first graders, you find that cell and you go diagonally down. You'll see the impact of the mobility factors. And that's why that number that might be eleven hundred in seven years might be down to eight fifty. I'm just making up a number here. So you'll see that for each of the columns, by the time you get to two thousand thirty-one, those not, not many of them are above a thousand. These are your in-district students here. Um, and you can see at the bottom there, you know, the, the summary of each of them. You go to the next slide, that upper set of rows at the top, those bright bring back in, they're out of district students. And we also separate after special ed. So those are added back in, forecasted. And the grand total numbers are the ones you see there kind of in the middle. So in summary, if you look at your first four columns, those are real numbers. It's not a forecast. So you've lost seventeen hundred students between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-four. That's reality. We're forecasting and that about on average, about uh five hundred student loss a year going out seven years. Hence, you see the numbers reaching out to the, maybe dipping into the fourteen thousands. That's again, we are in the forecasting business. I've been up here several times and maybe other people as well, been telling you this for several years. There's what we call, if it's a one-year trend, as we are, we call it an anomaly. Uh, this has been happening for a while. Unfortunately, I do not like delivering this bad or sad news, but uh uh as Sean mentioned, there's uh, most districts are going through this. And it's just happening in California. Birth rates moving, it's too expensive, they're relocating. It's just unfortunately the way, and so I hope it might turn back up, but the signs don't show it. Uh, there's not enough development to offset it. Uh, I think if you can just somehow, I don't know how, keep the people from leaving, that'd be a good. It's simple, it's easier said than done. But keeping them here at least would slow it down, but I'm just reporting what we're, I would say here. So here's the summary. And just to mention, they mentioned the typo and I'm sorry because it looks, makes it look, there's where we say you're losing thirty-four percent of your, we're seeing your middle schools, it's thirty-five percent high school. It was a typo in here. It really is. If you do the math, it said twenty-four and twenty-five, but you are really losing about a third of that population over a ten-year span. And that's a summary there, so.
Thank you. So first, Dave, thank you. Um, you know, uh it, it's difficult to deliver news like this and we really appreciate the data sciences. And I know you're here for any questions or it has. It does relate to the next presentation that we're getting. That when uh you've heard, when we say, you know, the loss of seventeen hundred students, clearly there, there's things that go along with that. You're talking about tens of millions of dollars that exited the school district in, in enrollment. So uh, we're here for the questions the board may have.
Um, uh, any questions?
I have a question. Um, so the mobility factor, uh, so you don't know where they're going? Like, where are they going?
I wish I could. Every district's asking that question. I, I, let me just say something because everyone wants to know those things. I've said it before, I don't know if you track your own exiting students, you know? Sometimes, you know, that's a, a way to maybe skip some answers.
I, I know we don't have definitive answers to that. It's a great question. What we can say is there are places, for example, Washoe uh school district in Nevada that covers the Reno area that cannot build schools fast enough. That they have people flooding into the area. There are other places, Texas, Texas. There's lots of different places where we do know there is growth. But across the nation, it's also important to note, it is a historical birth rate for the United States of America. It's not a localized phenomenon to Vista Unified. It's not a localized phenomenon to California. It's across the Union as well.
We can't, but we, what we can say is um people think they're going to charters or private schools. We can say that they're not going to charter private schools. They're, they're shrinking as well.
Yeah, we actually have a, what we call a, we actually have a larger market. We're not seeing that.
Very small, very small.
So, um okay, go ahead. I, I, I was just a comment I was asking them.
Um, with regard to homeschooling, I was sharing with Dr. Doyle a couple, maybe a month ago. Uh, we have an influx of kids on our neighborhood in, in Chatterbridge. And ten years ago, they were, they all grew up and moved out. Well, now there's tons of them. So one of my neighbors counted, we have thirty kids on our street. Twenty-one of them are homeschooled. Twenty-one out of thirty. So I think they're homeschooled.
I, I guess that specifically was when, when you do look at um the numbers as they're, you know, as say tw- uh twenty twenty-one is going into twenty twenty-two or, yeah, and you, you, year after year that if you look at the cohort, that the cohort is actually shrinking. And so that's not birth rate. Right? That's something different.
Right, that is the mobility factor. And uh, one thing to note is uh in larger school districts, the mobility, let me give an example. Uh, when I was with a school district that incorporated uh both urban environments and suburban environments. Okay, so we'll, we'll figure out which one, right? You would see that um students would exit the urban environment, the mobility was high out of certain areas and they would move to different communities because that's part of the trend and the pattern that some people have. For example, I'm a good example, actually. When I had a child, I, I lived in downtown San Diego and then as we got older, we moved into a suburb and then we moved together, right? When you have a smaller footprint zone, your mobility rate, sometimes this is that they're moving three school districts away or to a different environment. But there are trends you see in many school districts where this happens.
Um, I, I have a question. Okay, so I know that forecasting is not a perfect science. So uh I'm just curious in like when you've been forecasting for several years, is the decline greater than what you thought it was going to be? Or is it, are you, are you pretty accurate? Or is it maybe a little bit slower than you thought it's going to be? I mean, like, what, what is like the based on your forecast, what has actually happened when you look back?
In general, I mean, I, we do have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. Of course, a pandemic threw everything, you know, the way.
Sure.
But in general, we always said we aim, and it's like still some large, but it's actually small, plus or minus one to two percent. Okay, that's what we aim for because there's going to be some things happening out of our control. But that's what we try and I don't have your current data, so I can't tell you how close.
No, no, I'm just saying that like, okay, in that plus or minus one, one or two percent, it hasn't been plus or minus. I mean, like, you, that's sort of what I'm saying is like, is it, is it?
Accelerated?
Is that already faster than you thought, than you had been predicting? Is it, is it uh slower or is it just pretty steady and pretty?
Well, you saw on that slide, there's some, you know, seven hundred some years. I don't think we have it even going out that large for any future year or so. I think it's been a little larger than we thought. But we could go back and I could compare our previous ones to see how close.
You don't have to do that, but I'm just kind of curious to see if we're, you know, if, if like I know, I, I, I understand about forecasting, so I do understand that it's not a, but you know, so I'm just kind of curious as to seeing if, you know, uh, are we, is, is it like even a worse problem than we're thinking it is?
Well, what we can share is we do receive, so we typically come to the board every few years with Dave. But he does update us every year. We actually shifted this conversation forward, i- if you may recall from a few years ago. We shifted it forward. That's why he's talking about last year's data. We shifted it forward so you could talk about it before you started talking budget. We'll come back to you with more recent numbers as it happens. Uh, generally speaking, we've seen a slight more of a curve down. But each year that's been revised and it becomes more and more accurate. The other thing is generally for demographers, they're, they're within that plus minus pretty accurately within funding levels.
Oh, I, I definitely know that. I, I'm, I, I'm not trying to say your, your, your information is not accurate. I'm just trying to get an idea of like, is it like if we're because it's small, like if you're, if you're off, let's say it's, it's actually like a negative two percent greater. It's two, you know, two percent uh, two percent greater than what you predicted. But then that consistently happens once in ten years. That's a pretty, that's a pretty significant, you know.
We make the adjustment every year when he gets it. So if it's off, let's, I think the greatest variation we've seen is about point five percent. We make that modification, so it's there. The other thing that works for our advantage. Um, just to be clear is for us, making adjustments, we work off, we get funded off of a three-year average.
Right.
Right? So
If it does accelerate.
Yeah, so if it does accelerate, we, we get a little bit of a less steep curve and, and that happens. And then I think something that Dave and his team has done very well, and I, I've been, had the privilege of working with them in various areas, is they do advise when they see some sort of major something that happens, like one way or the other, but we're just not seeing that here.
No, I have no problem with the data or the methodology. I honestly, yeah, that's not what I'm trying to say. I'm just trying to say, is there, is there within that margin of error? Are we, are we going a little bit? Like I said, I, I, I said, I already said.
You got it, yeah.
Um, but um, yeah, okay, anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Budget development process.
All right, final presentation of the evening for you. Um, and we have
Thank you for your patience.
We have Vince uh, this house was with us. I'm, I'm gonna open up by saying uh two thank yous and then introducing the presentation. I want to thank Vince and Anna. In my uh entire career, because I also worked summer schools, even as a teacher. I, I've never had a three-week break or vacation. Uh, I did have one where I was very ill a couple of years ago, you may recall. But that was not a vacation, I assure you. Uh, did not feel like one with the needles and being hubright. Um, but I needed to go do some things and take care of families and have some life revelations and uh Vince and Anna are very capable, very able to handle things and I deeply appreciate it. And part of that is some wonderful questions came up uh about the budgeting process. And it sounds like this evening, uh, we're hoping you'll be able to help direct us as to how many workshops you might want to be able to do. And for good reason. This is this is part of your fiduciary obligation, one of the core obligations of a board, right? And you know that. And it relates to even insisting on support. And Vince is going to cover this, the dual obligation of every board, both to be financially solvent, but also to improve student outcomes. Right? And that can be a difficult thing at times. And the budgeting process is not made easier for anybody that's trying to read it by things that we just don't budget this way in our personal life. For example, if I'm told that I'm going to get inheritance, that I can collect it over the next five years and that is five hundred thousand dollars over five years, I would assume that I'm getting a hundred thousand dollars a year and budget such. But under the rules of public accounting, I have to say I have five hundred thousand dollars in the account right now. Doesn't mean the money's there. It means I have to put it there as a placeholder as I spend the money over time. Furthermore, there are additional rules that occur in this that are really hard because, you know, we got made sort of a promise as part of that local control funding we would get that we wouldn't have categoricals. And categoricals make life really difficult. And he's going to cover this in depth. But those categoricals are actually bad. We call them restricted funding now. We don't call them categoricals. But federal funding is restricted categoricals. Certain state funding, we talked about Prop twenty-eight, all sorts of different ones. E L O is restricted funding. All of those are categorical funds. We don't get a say. And sometimes they'll give it to us not in terms of cash in the bank, but a number on the page that has to be spent over time. And so Vince is going to get into that in terms of balancing, but also talk about purpose-based measurement. Uh, an option for you to consider in all of this. So I'll turn it over to Vince and again, I say thank you to both you and Anna for everything. Really appreciate it.
Okay, well, we're uh approaching the end. So I'm going to try to be brief, but uh hopefully give you the information that you need. Uh, and as I go through this presentation, uh we're not going to get into a lot of weeds tonight because I think we're saving that for future meetings, study sessions. Uh, so we're going to be looking at more big picture. And so that's what this first slide uh kind of represents. It's kind of like the big pictures of, you know, the components of a strategic plan. Because that's where it all starts. It starts with the board and the uh cabinet and the superintendent all coming together and looking at, you know, where are we now? Where do we want to be in the future? And then what are the, what are the steps that we need to take to get there? So again, you look at this, this diagram and you'll see that So, again, you look at this, this diagram, and you'll see that the. The the top bubbles, the one in the middle is the purpose. So we talk about what's our mission, or which, I like the word purpose better, because it's it's more powerful, I think, than than mission. Mission certainly connotates more of the military kind of a thing, but uh, you know, it's the purpose, it's why, it's the why we're here. Uh, along with that, uh, you have that vision for the future. You know, where do we want to be five, ten years from now? Uh, and of course, then there's a set of beliefs. How do we, you know, what do we believe in? The other area is those areas of focus. Once you know your purpose and your vision, you start looking at. Uh, what are the strategies and what are the areas we want to focus on to get to that vision? Below, you have all of the resources. You have, you know, the uh the funding, uh other resources, you you have the people capital. It all comes together into that blue bubble where it says the LCAP and the budget, because the LCAP and the budget are done simultaneously. Uh, and so that's, that's where the plan is, uh, to get you to where you want to go, is that LCAP and budget. The next uh slide up here kind of starts to break down into what are the systems involved? The major key systems that the district has, all districts have these key systems. Uh, the bottom uh group of uh, okay, I guess these are uh. Uh, hexathons or optagons again, but they're uh, but but what it basically is, is that is the LCAP process. That, and you can see that, you know, around that, uh, it shows you, you know, what you're doing during that LCAP process. You know, from looking at uh what what the needs are and going around clockwise to. Uh, what's, what's the demographics uh that you're looking at, what's the current uh results that you've seen and all. That feeds directly into the budgeting process. The budgeting process, you'll see up on top, uh, one of the things you saw tonight was a projection of enrollment, right? That's, that's where it all starts. So we we just got that projection of enrollment, so now we start to say, okay, now, from that. We can start calculating revenues, and we can start looking at what kind of staffing needs are we going to need. So they're on the expense side. And so these are the uh key elements that go into that. And so this is all part of that budget process. That translates over to what I call a position control process. You'll see that, that's a yellow box between those two top uh. Uh, systems, uh, and that other system there on the left is the staffing system. And so that uh, they all work together. And if if you uh, we we'll dive into some of these a little bit more detail. But again, big picture, uh, kind of get to know what it looks like. Now, if you go to the next one, uh, many, many years ago, somebody said to me. He goes, you should be able to explain the budget on the back of a cocktail napkin. I go, really? Okay, so what's what I did? I got a, I got a cocktail napkin, I unfolded it, and then I started to chart out. What's the budget, what's the budget process? And basically, this is what I came up with. Uh, and if you look at the very left column there, uh, that left column, that's where the strategic plan starts into place. And that's where we start looking at those uh visions for the future. But then it also feeds into the LCAP, that's in those, it drops down into the LCAP box, and and it has all the different components. Of those different en- entities that are involved with producing the LCAP. That feeds down into that bottom box on the left side, which is all of the uh. Departments and other areas where, you know, from, you know, general education to special ed, to all those things. They have to be looking at, based on this strategic plan, what are the things we need to do to make improvements? And that then translates into that second column, which is the budget. And at the top, you'll see the assumption. So when you do a budget, the first thing you're gonna do is make a lot of assumptions. Because uh, that's what, that's what we have to work with. The assumptions of what your enrollment gonna be, what your ADA gonna be, uh, the assumptions of what's the the COLA is going to be. The assumptions of the uh, the staffing formulas that you're gonna have. Uh, so you'll have those assumptions that are gonna create your revenue sources, and then the assumptions that are gonna create your uh expenditures. In between there, that yellow box that's in there, that's uh, that's, everything's gonna get filtered through. Your end code, uh bargaining unit agreements, your uh board policies. And then certainly budget formulas uh that the district may have in place. That right column simultaneously, as you're going through those budget assumptions. And doing that, you're also simultaneously doing the LCAP process, which is a process that's dictated pretty much by the state. Uh, and so you're following that at the same time, which is gonna uh hopefully connect to those eight state priorities and your district priorities. That are gonna allow you then to look at how are we going to improve, you know, student performance. Uh, and all the metrics that go along with, you know, seeing, you know, are we uh. Uh, are we having students attendance rates going up? Are we having uh graduation rates going up? And are we having test scores go up? Now, just as a, just as a side note, and this, you don't even know about this yet, but I, but I did a little chart. Uh, that I took a look at your test scores over a period of time. And I took a look, I had a comparison of a uh, of the state, whole state, and then a comparison of a. Uh, a peer group. Uh, and the peer group is a number of districts between San Diego and Riverside uh county areas. And uh, you guys are doing better than the peer group. And spending less per student. So it's a, so so you're doing something right right now. So I just, just, just want to give you that. So, let's talk about the budgeting methodologies. So there's, right now, I identified about six. Uh, different types of budgeting methodologies. Uh, the rollover budget is the one that a lot of districts have always used, is you take what you did the current year. And you say, okay, we're gonna roll that over the revenues and the expenditures to the next year, assuming that we're just gonna do more of the same. Uh, you know, certainly, you know, not making a lot of changes, but still, that's one method. Uh, allocation methodology, this is where everything's based off of, uh allocating on either uh. Uh, student uh counts or square footage or something like that, that the district puts into place. Uh, zero-based budgeting, uh, I've I've done zero-based budgeting in the past. Uh, works great in uh, you know, certain situations, uh, but it's very time-consuming, it's very intense. And uh, it's something that uh, you do it once to get a new base. But it it's not something that I would suggest you do every year. The next one is site-based budgeting.
I'll let you know you have ten minutes now.
Okay. Ten minutes, okay. Site-based budgeting, uh, basically that rolls back to what what the sites uh are doing, and it's rolling back up into the district. And performance-based budgeting, this is more for, uh, I want to say, you know, private industry. Uh, and purpose-based. Now, purpose-based, I'm gonna explain a little bit about what purpose-based budgeting. But it is a a methodology that uh, you know, I've used in the past and that. Basically, it's a systematic approach that allows you to take. Uh, and focus your resources on uh areas that the the, to accomplish those organizational uh requirements. And purpose and vision for that future. And of course, the way we do this is by developing goals and strategies, by uh creating. Uh, a a plan that goes three to five years. And that follows sort of the LCAP model, so this purpose-based budgeting is right in line with what LCAP does. Uh, and then it's forming these major uh areas, categories, that, you know, you want to focus on. Uh, and then it allows you to establish levels of expenditures uh within each one of these categories and programs. Now, at the end of the, of, if you do it right, you're gonna end up with a list with two lists. You're gonna have a list of all the things that you can do. And then you're gonna have a list of all the things you'd like to do, but you don't have enough money to do. So there's a funded list of non-funded, but it's at the end of this whole process. Now, the dilemma, of course, uh, as you look at this. There's two different things that you are looking for, right? Improve student outcomes. I mean, that's exactly what, you know, so you want, you know. Increase graduation rates, increase attendance, uh, or uh academic performance, college and career ready. And get your, in fact, we saw a lot of kids who looked like they were ready to go, you know, into uh. And and to become productive citizens tonight, because we heard them speak, and I'm like, wow, okay. I said, huh, I don't know if I want to get up and speak, because it's gonna make me look bad, because these kids were so articulate. But, the bottom line is, you've got to develop, there's a balancing act. Uh, the system on the, on the one side where it says maintain fiscal solvency. Uh, that's a requirement, that's in law, that you gotta do that, can't get away from that, just like uh. Just like you said. Uh, and then improve student outcomes. So these, this is the dichotomy that you're facing. And uh, this is the dilemma that most districts are facing. Uh, and and you've got to deal with things like the declining enrollment and things like this. All right, so, we're we're uh getting to the questions or the topics that came up at the last meeting. Uh, and that's uh, you know, when we, when the question about the hundred and forty-three million dollars. And this chart basically on the left side is the estimated actuals for twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, to a school year, and you'll see that there's a uh. Unrestricted, a restricted, and a combined uh budget. This is your general fund. Then it's compared to the next middle columns, which is your unaudited actuals for that year. And you see that there's some highlighted areas. If I take a look at the unrestricted for the estimated actuals and the uh unaudit actuals, they're very close, very close. Uh, so those came out pretty much, you know, the way they were projected. But you see that most of the changes and most of the off between for the uh, the. Estimated and the unauthentic actuals came in the restricted side of the house. And you can see those little highlighted areas. So the final set of columns is the variances. And you can see most of those variances ended up in that restricted side. Uh, to the tune of about twenty million dollar difference. So that's uh an area that is, uh, like you say, those are the uh categorical programs, these are the things where. Uh, you know, they're coming from state sources, and sometimes we don't know until the very end of the period. Uh, we, we create that estimated actuals in May. Before we close the books. Uh, and then the unauthited actuals actually are com- completed in August. And so that's where we find all of those changes come in, because sometimes on the restricted side, it's very difficult. And figure out where are they gonna end up. So, you can see that uh, we go to the the next page, I want to say, there was a question about. Where did it go? There's a hundred and forty-three million dollars, where did it go? Well, it's in the ending balance of the twenty-three, twenty-four unaudit actuals. And if you take a look, that it goes across that, that's the last set of columns now is the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And that ending balance went right to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. That was the beginning balance. So what that shows is that those monies then were accounted for in your beginning balances of the following year. And then you can see they were actually spent down a little bit to the tune of about another uh. You know, thirty-five million dollars. Uh, so most of that was in your unre- uh, your restricted side, a little bit in your uh unrestricted side. Uh, so that's basically, hopefully, the question about where did the money go? That's where it went, and that then begins, some of it got spent in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Now, the next steps, okay, this is where we're gonna hopefully start to plan for, where do we go from here? So uh, one of the suggestions and and the next steps in the process is. We have board study sessions, do you want to go down the road of uh getting more detailed information, starting to get more information about what is. That whole uh. Purpose-based budgeting look like? Uh, and we can do that in probably, you know, two to three sessions uh of study sessions.
Can I interrupt you, please?
Go ahead.
So, Dr. Doyle, I thought we talked about zero-based budgeting.
We, you could do zero-based budgeting.
Yeah, that that.
It's an option.
It's uh.
Just giving you a recommendation.
This is, yeah.
So we talked about starting at the base and moving into what the kids need the most and going through the entire budget. Not purpose-based, but zero-based, to make sure we're getting the most impact for our.
It's part of the purpose-based budgeting, uh incorporates some zero-based budgeting concepts, yes. And 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 when we go through the whole thing, if you want to go through that during the study sessions, you can see it.
This is the, something more, we're simply giving you information.
But this whole presentation is on purpose-based. We asked, I asked for zero-based, and I don't know what the other members were asking for.
That's why we need to have a workshop to discuss it and kind of come to a consensus what the level of the board is. Because that would take more time to explain each type of process that a school, district, and LEA might choose to use. And involve and and work with, right? Or it's work, and we need to know what we are going to do.
No, I think, I agree, I think we need to, uh, the, we need to go forward, we need to do the budget study sessions. I don't know why we need to wait till January, we might want to do a couple and might want to start some in December.
We might want to have a workshop to decide zero-based or purpose-based or whatever in December, so that we're ready to get going in January.
Is, is everyone okay with that?
It's a short.
I, it's a short month, and there's a lot of events. Well, with family and holidays and employers, I don't know if I can.
I have an idea.
Agree to that right now.
I have an idea. We have a special board meeting later this month in uh November for the um.
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth. Can we tap that on?
Well, you also have a governance meeting, except for that.
We could kick out governance. This is more important to move on.
I disagree. They're both equally important. We need synergy.
How long, if we do the uh zero-based budgeting with the purpose-based budgeting, like, how long can we get that explained and have a discussion, something like an hour, two hours?
The different, I think he's asking, what's the difference between purpose-based and zero-based?
Yeah, it will probably take at least an hour, yeah, a couple, maybe an hour and a half, two hours.
Got it, and the charter school renewal on the nineteenth, that'll be like, you know, an hour or less?
Oh, no, that that would be quite quick, actually. That I wouldn't anticipate one in thirty minutes.
That's the meeting I was talking about.
No, it's the same meeting. So right currently, right now, for November nineteenth, there are two elements scheduled. One is the required review and approval or denial of the charter, that's the, this is the Springs charter, not the one you heard tonight. And then the second component that has already been scheduled is the continuation of the governance training. That is what's currently scheduled for the nineteenth.
Who's uh scheduled to give that training on the nineteenth? Is it? I mean, if 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 the charter school's gonna be pretty quick, you know, thirty minutes, like thirty minutes. The governance is another two hours, and then like another hour of like this.
It's possible. I just wanted to make sure you understood what's currently on the books.
We'd be there like maybe someday, so.
We we got to see if if does, you would be available for the nineteenth or not.
Uh, well, I do have a commitment on the nineteenth already, uh, so that would be difficult.
But I just want to clarify, the purpose of the presentation tonight is, is this isn't purpose-based, the presentation was purpose, it's just one recommendation.
The presentation was about the fact that in order to talk about the budget, whether it's zero-based or purpose-based, it would take a variety of meetings. A number of meetings to do, for which we're prepared to do, and by the way, we've done this in the past. This isn't new for us as a district, we've gone through this process.
I think we need more meetings. I definitely, I've, I've been saying that since I got on board, that like, the, the way it is, it's not enough to actually get these discussions done, so I. Whatever we have to do to get more, get more, I'm.
What's slated for the December meeting, meeting agenda, that's the big light panel?
Well, December meeting agenda is for interim, um, so that's, that, that is a budget presentation, but it's a required budget presentation. I don't, uh, I would have to look at the historical, um, typically December tends to be a little longer. Um, but I would have to look, I, I can't tell you that. At this point, now, would there be taught, would there be a chance to do a special board meeting either prior to the board meeting or after? Yes, absolutely, we could do something like that, we could look into that and get back to you on it. Or we can have Chris start to kind of poll each of you and find out when we can set these additional meetings, whether you wanna do one in December. Start and, and do some more in January and February. You know, we're proposing, again, if you wanna do zero-based or purpose-based, it's gonna be a solid three to five meetings, correct, Ed? That's.
Is there an easy way to just briefly say the difference between zero-based and purpose-based?
Well, certainly, the ea- the easy way is, uh. Zero-based is just like you s- s- see, you're starting with this, nothing. You're gonna have to go out to every single principal, every single director. Uh, and find out, you know, for you to run your school, for you to run your department. Uh, I want you to clear everything and start from scratch and build. What that department is gonna look like, to pay people, what all the, uh. You know, people you would need, uh, the types of, you know, skills that they would need, also looking at. Uh, all of your. Supply needs, equipment needs, uh, training needs. You know. Some, some of it is gonna be easier, because utilities are utilities. But you, you have to make space for all of these things. Now, in, uh, in purpose-based. Uh, you're gonna do something similar, except for the fact that, uh. You're working within the framework of what people are already doing in like LCAP preparation. Uh, you still wanna go down to those site levels, because the sites are still doing the SIPs, right? And they're doing all, all their other plans, that, all of that should be rolled into this. Uh, the, uh, departments will do their lists of things that they need. The staffing may or may not change depending on, uh. Where the, uh, you know, what, what the areas of focus are. Uh, so a lot of it's gonna depend on where the vision is. And where the areas of focus are that the district wants to do for that year, areas of focus can change for your.
Can I just interrupt, just, I'm sorry, that went, phew, over my head for a second. And I, and, and is it possible to kind of like procedurally just to like tell me, what's the difference between? Purpose-based and zero-based, so, like, what would be different? If we went and decided we wanted to do zero-based, we'd go right around directly to the site, we're saying, hey, uh, Mr. Principal, and Mrs. Principal, give us. You know, what it takes to run your site, okay, versus a purpose-based, right? So like, that's, I, I, I didn't quite.
Okay, so, one of the, one of the things in the purpose-based budgeting is a, uh. It's an evaluation instrument that you would use in order to, uh, evaluate whatever an item. If it's contributing to one of those major areas of focus. And to what extent is it supporting the eight state priorities? So you're tying it to eight state priorities and the areas of focus, uh, for the district's vision. Uh, and then you use, it's a, I wanna say, uh, uh, an instrument. That'll allow you to take an item and score it, and each one of these items will have, uh. Different weights, so from year to year, you may put a, a higher weight on student achievement. Or on parent involvement, or something like that. Uh, and then those would get, those would get weighted scores based off of input from. Uh, executive staff, you know, or directors, uh, about. Their items and where they fall, so you get, so basically what you're gonna do is get a, a score. And that score is then going to go into a priority. And so the highest scores will be at the top of the list. The lowest scores will be at the bottom of the list, at some place, your. Funding that you have available is gonna run out, you always have more needs than you have money. Right, and so when that runs out, then basically you've got a prioritized list for both. What you're gonna fund.
Would you not do that for zero-based?
Uh, well, you, you could.
I'm, I'm just curious.
But, but the reason I call it purpose-based is because under zero-based, people are just gonna dump everything they want. And then you're gonna have to figure out, you're still gonna have to give an allocation of some sort. So there's, there's gonna have to be a line drawn somewhere. But the purpose-based, basically, it helps you to identify which things. Uh, meet your purpose needs, what you believe is important. Uh, and it's, and, and you can put a number on it. And that's the piece that's gonna take a little bit of time for explaining in another session.
Yeah, now, thank you for that brief.
Okay, alright, does it make sense a little bit?
Yes.
Does zero-based discount, um, stakeholder input via our, uh, parents or employee groups? When we go that route?
No, because you still have to do that under LCAP.
And then with, uh, zero-based, Dr. Doyle, we have like our equity matrix, we have our magnet schools, like, we have. Title, or federal funds that are on exhibit, so. Can you explain?
Well, I mean, again, that, that's why it's kind of hard right now to have this conversation with you about, without having a structure in place to walk everyone through it. Um, that's why we're, we're kind of struggling right now, because I, we can give you an oversimplification. But then two months, uh, two hours into our next meeting, you might get mad at us because we didn't tell you some things.
Sure.
So all I can say is, if, if you wanted me to boil it down to like a simple understanding, and again, you're gonna get mad at me three, three hours into it.
Let, let me, let me make a suggestion.
Okay.
Can we all do our own research and then meet in December, or some, not in December, Martha? My apologies, uh, maybe in January and decide what methodology we want to do for this?
I think we should probably do like a two-by-two and, you know, get that, and, you know, dive in.
We can give you a whole bunch of.
Some less, you're not gonna need more.
Different items, yeah.
Others are gonna need less, but at least, you know, we get the opportunity to tag them.
That might be the, the most efficient way to do it. I think ultimately, we need to get some dates set. So regardless of whether you choose zero-based or purpose-based, we need to identify some dates, so would it be okay if Chris started working? To pull you to set some dates?
Yep.
Yes.
Um, could I get some consensus on whether or not you would even like us to attempt a December date? Or should we just blow it?
I, I'm gonna take December date.
I think Martha's, uh, trustee Alvarado was correct, I think it's just such a short month.
So would, would you be comfortable, so we will start working on that, so that, that's good, we're making progress. The second one would be, would you be amenable to having like a quick one-by-one or two-by-two between now and January? To give you some different ideas, like as, as trustee Martin said about what is zero-based, we can actually give you actual definitions of it. Um, and what, what a process, like a flowchart for purpose-based, maybe we do that then, give them a flowchart for purpose and flowchart for zero.
And we do it with all the budgeting methodologies, because maybe there's a different one from zero-based, like. Performance budgeting, I'm assuming is trying to get better student performances, budgeting.
Yeah, and there's actually a tool we would love to show you, and the two-by-two is an actual tool that Ben's developed, it's actually pretty cool. Something you might like to see, but I think if we get you to do like a one-on-one or two-by-two, I think that might build your background a little bit more. But then, we apologize, we're, we're trying to do something that's really complex and give you like short bites, and it's not really fair.
If it's really necessary.
It's necessary, yeah.
Alright, so yes, I, I, I'm amenable to doing, adding some extra meetings in January and February, so everyone up here? Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, another question.
Thank you.
It's actually on the hundred and forty-three million.
Yes.
Okay, so can you go slide back?
Yeah, absolutely, which one, eight or nine?
It is on page nine.
Okay, there we go.
Where the hundred and forty-three million, um, if you actually look at the, uh, the actuals. The hundred and forty-three million was in the reserves.
It's an ending balance, that's the ending balance there that you're looking at, right?
The ending balance that I.
Fund balance ending.
Fund balance, yeah.
Are you looking at the same?
Fund balance ending.
I don't see anything on here, on your slide that talks about the reserves.
So show him on your paper. You can see on your paper?
No, are you referring to the total reserves up above here?
Those are, those are the revenues up top, expenditures below that. And there's the other alcos and things and, uh.
But I don't see, I don't see anything that refers to the reserves, which here it does, it says fund balance reserves. And you just look across the January first. Uh, beginning is a hundred and forty-three, it's off a little bit, a hundred and forty-three point one million. Um, so, I, I guess my question is, is you're saying this is in the general fund budget?
That's the general, that's the combined general fund, yes.
And that includes the reserves?
That. Say that again?
Does, in your, what you're telling me is that the general fund.
Right.
Also includes the reserves.
The ending balances that you're seeing in the general fund for twenty-three, twenty-four. Includes those things that are in reserve, so.
Okay.
So if you, if you, you would have to go back and take a look at the, uh, Saks forms.
That's what you're looking at right now.
So you'll get. And it's broken out, it's broken out as to, you know, what those, uh. What the eighty-nine or eighty-six million dollars is, uh, totaling, but it fits by.
Yeah.
Each one of the.
It would be easier if you saw the form you're referring to, because it's Saks.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know what that looks like, I just think for this, it wasn't. Important to, yes, you're looking at.
I just wanna know if that's reserves. Fund balance reserves.
Well, it says.
Forty-three million.
Yeah, it says beginning fund balance right there.
Yes, there's nothing on that line, look down, as of July first, okay, so beginning.
July, July first, that's the beginning fund balance right there.
That's fund balance, comma, reserve, so.
Well, comma is, means. Uh, you see all this stuff right here?
Yes, and here it is again.
Right, and so.
So this is the ending balance, as of June thirtieth.
Okay.
And the, so is this reserve money or general fund money?
That's, that's general fund money, fifty-seven million of it is unrestricted, eighty-six million of it is restricted. But those, but that's the ending balance of which eighty-six million, uh, there should be another.
There is.
List in here someplace that shows the breakout of that eighty-six, because there's a whole bunch of programs.
Yeah, the breakdown of it.
And that's on a different page, I think, because, uh.
But what I'm looking at is the difference between the reserves and the general, I wanna know how much is in reserves and how much is in the general fund.
That's how much is in the general fund.
That's general fund, okay.
That's, that's how much is in the general.
So we need to find out what happened to the money that went in the reserves. I'll talk to him.
It's right there. This, this is part of it, and.
So you're saying this is general fund?
Yeah.
So it's the general fund ending balance, right?
And the reserves for economic uncertainty.
Well, the reserves for economic uncertainty is right here, it's part, it's part of that, it's on the unrestricted side, it's right there. That's what that is, the reserve for economic uncertainty right here, okay.
But this is a perfect example of what we can talk through during the budget development, we can spend an hour.
Yeah.
Going over, Saks is a very complex document, and it's more than one page, there's a whole bunch of different things that are connected, but this is a really good example. Of what we can talk through and show you, and kind of work through how you read the Saks report and where all the money is.
True.
Okay, good, okay, good. Anyone else have any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, district announcement, superintendent comments.
No, I think, I think let's move on to, you have a, you have a very important presentation to make.
It's exciting, I'm excited.
And it's getting later, so let's do that.
I have a nineteen A, though.
Okay, go ahead, nineteen A, but request for future board.
Yes, so, um, we are doing a program inventory on, uh. First part is in December, right, and then the input from teachers comes later, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Totally great.
I would like a program inventory also for business services, what programs are you using, which ones do you use actively, which ones can we get rid of? As far as contracts goes.
When you say program, you're talking about digital program?
Yes, I'm assuming all of those.
Yeah, okay, I, I just wanted to make sure we're.
If you haven't, I'm gonna be going through every department on that one. Um, and then I have a second request, in June of last year, I asked for, uh, from fiscal services. A way to see what monthly balances were and that kind of thing, and then I met with Sean and Anna in July. And I, we, we penciled out a format, and I haven't heard anything. So now I'm asking for a read-only access to all financial programs. Read only, I'm not gonna touch them, but I wanna see all the financial programs, all the fiscal programs, I would suggest that that be given to all board members.
I would like that as well.
Yeah, let us research your request, so it can tell you what, what's feasible and what's not feasible, we understand what you're asking for, and we will get back to you on that.
Great. Now I'm done.
Okay, thank you, anyone else have any requests for board? Future agendas, okay, uh, alright, so now, we're, Dr. Doyle and I are gonna play musical computers.
Yeah, well, actually, if you want me to get up, and you, so you can use it, this, I've, I've got your thing here.
Okay.
We've shared the screen, I have a couple items up here.
There you go.
But just let me know what you want, or if you wanna drive, you can drive, but you have to like go.
Yeah, let me drive, because I, I kinda know, yeah, I know, yeah.
So these are your items, and this is your screen.
Gotcha.
And I hope everyone can see it, yeah, I think you can see it.
Oh, we got, you can hear my stuff up here, Matt?
No, that's good, I, I'm fine, I'll sit right here, it's better for me to see.
Alright.
I've been saying where he does.
Okay.
I like it.
So, um, you're sharing my screen, okay, so. Okay, so this is what got me into this program. These are scatter plots, this is every school in the state of California, grouped by socioeconomic status, this is for English language arts. We can look at this from math as well. And you can see, the green, the green circles are the more socioeconomically advantaged schools. Zero to seven, zero to twenty-five percent economically disadvantaged, yellow is twenty-five to fifty percent. Uh, ma- um, orange is fifty to seventy-five percent, and, um. So, the red is seventy-five to one hundred percent, so we can pull up this stuff. So I'm gonna go in here. And I'm just gonna show you, this is, uh, really good information to give us a snapshot of where. Our district is, now, this is twenty-four, twenty, uh, twenty-four data, so. Alright, so it's gonna come up, this is our math scores, let me, um. But the school name. There we go. There we go, alright, so you can see each school here, and, um, you can see that Casita is doing great in math. Um, well, for our district, it's sixty-seven percent at, and above proficiency, but it's also one of our more, um. Advantage schools, um, so basically what this is, this is the percent of, uh.
Achievement.
Achievement, the, of, uh, met or exceed the state standard. And then down here is cost per student that we're spending, so you can see that like at, um. Bapa for, we're spending twelve thousand dollars per student. And, um, we're getting twenty-nine percent and above proficiency, um, for math. If we go to English language arts. This is really exciting, Mission High is very exciting, uh, Mission Vista High is very exciting, uh, because we're spending ten thousand dollars per student. And they have for English language arts, eighty-nine percent proficiency. So that's probably one of the best schools in the state, to be honest with you. Um, but then we, we, you know, we see our continuation schools are spending more money, which we should, we should, that's equity, that's, you know, we should be spending. But we're just not getting these student achievements, so we, really what we wanna do is. In this program, we discussed how to get these numbers up to here. So I'm gonna go into, um. Kind of information, is this on the agenda?
Yeah.
This is, yes, it's the economics program that I did, I just graduated yesterday. So, yes, it is. So, yes, it is.
To Georgetown. Nineteen B.
Uh, so. Dr. Doyle, where's the, uh, thumb drive stuff? Oh.
It's tied.
Oh, got you. Gotcha, 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 gotcha. Now, um, so some of the things that we talked about, we went to the slide. How do I get this shared over there?
You have to drag it.
Okay, I need you to drive now. Yeah. So if you go to the, you can just Google, um, edenomics lab.
Well, did you want me to do that?
No, 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 I'm just, uh, trustee Martin wanted me to talk about the website. That was the live website that showed you. This is some of the data that that I got from.
Send everyone a link for that later.
Yeah, and this is some of the data that I got. So as you can see. Oh, it's on the screen.
It'll, it'll come up. Give me a moment.
Okay, so you can, many issues, I'll come here.
Okay.
So you can see two, that there's two decades of spending data. So this was stuff that we discussed about, look, our, this is for the United States, and general spending's going up, inflation's, the gray line is inflation, this gray line here. But you can see that our reading scores and our math scores are not keeping up. So the quest, the the thing that we have to do is kind of look at alternatives, like how do we get these these scores up? So some of the things that we discussed were, uh, were kind of outside-the-box things, like, um, I'll go back here. Such as, I I talked about a little bit of it, and such as, uh, maybe holding our contractors all accountable for student outcomes. So things like we have our ELP funds, and we're using those for after-school programs. And perhaps, you know, telling, telling these contractors that, okay, you are now going to be responsible for student outcomes. And, you know, the instructor gave an example of this, that there was one who played, they played basketball with the kids after school, and they're like, well, what are we supposed to do? Long story short, they ended up, um, playing basketball for like a half hour, then taking time to help them with their homework for half hour. And then they went back playing basketball, and every single one of the students in that program saw their scores, like quadruple, they've given, they got, they got their grades better, their student outcomes are better, their scores, everything improved. Um, that was one of the things. Um, so outcomes, um, based contracting, you know, it's, it's stuff like that. Um, and, um, it, a lot of stuff we're talking about, looking at things like, uh, pensions. Like, you know, is is, we love our pensions and we love our pension programs, but is there, is there things that we can possibly do to lower that? Now, that doesn't impact our district that as as drastically, so, but it's still every little bit helps, you know? Things like, um, master's degree programs. Are we seeing the return on the ma- actually, there's, do you have the one there that says the master's degree program? Let's see, I think, um.
Money matter?
No. No, no.
Bad spending?
No, no. Actually, do that with the grade.
Grade?
Yes. So this, yes, do that one. So this is a tool that they came up with to help us when we're talking about budgeting and, um, and aligning it with student outcomes. So you can see that you talk about the, um, the investment, the major cost factors. Um, estimated, uh, students served, the cost per participating student, desired outcomes, the risks. And so you basically do an analysis like that on on everything that we're doing for budgeting. And, um, see if this is going to pan out, what what we are hoping to get from these these investments. And whether they, you know, what what's involved with that. So that's a very valuable tool also. So those are, those are just a few of the things that we talked about that I'm sharing with you. I, it was, it's a great program. I can't say enough good things about it. I'm just giving you kind of a touch about it. Um, definitely go to the website and just play with some of the data. Yes, the, uh, I'll send you the, you know, I have, I'll have them sent.
Send them, or do you want me to put it in the?
No, no, you put it in the Friday.
Yeah, I'll have them, and I'll, I'll put like a folder or something in the Friday letter, because there's quite a bit.
Well, you know, you can just do the, uh, the the link to the website. That's what I'm talking about for the data.
Okay, good.
Um, the other stuff, the, all the slides and everything. No, you guys need to take, you guys need to do, you do your work. You want to see that, take the course. But it was, I really want to thank you guys for funding that. It was really informative. It was really helpful. And, um, and I'm just, I'm very excited about it. Learned a lot of really good stuff, so, thank you. So that was, that was that. Anyone have any questions?
No, I don't want to look at the data.
Okay, all right. Okay, anybody else have any board member reports out? No? Okay, uh, any reflections on the board meeting? Seeing none. Uh, our next regular board meeting is December eleventh, and, uh, meeting is adjourned at nine fifty-four.